All right, I'm ready when you guys.
Recording in progress.
You ready to go, John?
Ready.
All right, we'll give, Melanie just showed up, so we'll give her a second. All right, they're going through the electronic check. Well, we'll get started, Mike will be rolling in, so we're going to have more than enough for a quorum. All right, welcome everybody to the Thursday, June 2nd, 2022, meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. See if I can speak. And in accordance with Assembly Bill 361, the Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually. Go on the county website to figure out what's the best way to join us. And with that, I'll call the mean to order and ask everybody to join me in a salute to the flag. Thank you. Oh, you can't hear out there?
Now I can, now I can.
All right, I'll get it a little closer. I apologize, thank you for saying something. It's usually not the problem, usually people are telling me to be quiet. All right, roll call, Trip. We can, I guess. Okay, we'll give it just a second.
Hey Alan, this is Brian, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I know Noah and I were both on, and as soon as it said "recording in progress", then it kicked us both out, so I'm not sure if he's back on yet, but I wanted to point that out.
Well, I can see him, I, go ahead and speak, Noah.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yep, we got him, Mike, you're, and Mike just got through the screening. Go ahead, Trip.
All right, we're going to start the roll call vote with Alan Bonjio.
Present.
Noah Levy. Brian Mitchell.
Present.
Mike Newman.
Here.
Melanie McCaver.
Here.
Peggy O'Neil.
Here.
And Thomas Mulder.
Here.
Looks like we have a full crew tonight, that's great. All right, so Director, do we have any agenda modifications?
There are none that we are proposing tonight, I know that you, Chair, had mentioned wanting to move the Holgerson subdivision from number three under public hearings to number one.
Correct, I'm going to do that because that's what I told the public we would do, it would be the first items that we did at this meeting, that and Nordic Fish Farms, and so Nordic will go, and then the Holgerson project will be the one after that. So that's the only change. All right, so that brings us to public comment, and this is a time when anybody can speak on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. And so, please, if you're in the audience and you want to speak, come to the podium, and I will also let attendees that are joining us on the computer, so, is there anybody who wishes to speak on anything that is not on tonight's agenda? Is there anybody in the public that is not here but on phone or computer that would like to speak on any item? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to diverge from things that are the normal, I'm going to take off my Planning Commission hat and put on my public speaker hat, so hold me to three minutes, Trip. I thought there'd be some other speakers, but I just wanted to speak to the Director moving on and say what a pleasure it's been to work with you, I've been working with this county for forty-ish years, I've never worked with anybody even in your caliber. You're a great guy, I found it very troubling to see the comments that many made on the Lost Coast outpost about you. For as much bad as they said about you, you were their biggest advocate, and I can't tell you how many times John and I differed on things that had to do with cannabis, and he always stood up for the cannabis industry, and it was hard to see how bad you were beat up there. I wish you all the best, and I can tell you, Fort Bragg is one lucky place to get you. It's going to be really hard to fill your shoes. So with that, Ms. In it, Melanie, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I too would like to congratulate the Director for his new position, and thank him for his service to this county. I first met John as an invited guest speaker in my environmental impact assessment class, and we've had some, I guess, disagreements regarding some policy at the county level in terms of cannabis, but, you know, being the Director of Building and Planning, there's a lot more that goes into it than just that, and, you know, he has been doing a phenomenal job with such a large department, and the level of turnover in that department is tremendous, and so, you know, I know there's been a lot of things kind of behind the scenes that we're not aware of, that the Director has been doing a great job on, so congratulations, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair, I too would like to express my remorse that you are moving on to one of my favorite parts of the North Coast, which is Fort Bragg area, I went to school in Point Arena, and that was my area during my teenage years, so I know how lucky they are to have you there, and I express my gratitude with your years here, you were always on things, and trying to do what you could, as best you could, and I think you did a darn good job, John, so I'm going to miss you here, but I expect to be able to stop by maybe on a whim, as I'm riding through on my Harley, of course. Okay, maybe join me in a ride?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Alan, could I just?
Okay, go ahead, Noah, and Thomas after Noah.
Okay, thank you, I don't want to take up too much time, but I like, I think all of my fellow Commissioners was shocked and really saddened by this news, I can understand the reasons why, I can speculate as to the reasons why you might want to make a change, John, but I just want to say, having been on this commission for about nine years, there were two or three Planning Directors before you, there were others that I worked with in my capacity before the commission, I have never worked with a Planning Director that was anything like at your level, you have done an extraordinary job through an extraordinarily challenging era, you know, you have walked us, led us through the start and the middle of our cannabis era, and it has been so challenging, perhaps the fact that you have critics on all sides of the spectrum and all sides of the cannabis issue means that you have gotten it just about right, but for those of us who have actually worked with you closely, week in and week out, we know the kind of job you've done and the kind of man you are, thank you so much for your service.
Thomas.
Well, three minutes isn't enough time, but I'll keep it short, I was, I didn't interview with K-Mud, it was over four minutes when they clipped it down, I'm sad for our county, but I'm happy for you, it's going to be some really big shoes to fill, and I'm really, really concerned for us as a Planning Commission moving forward, getting the knowledge and expertise that we need to move forward on projects, and I hope for peacefulness moving forward, and I thank you for everything you've done for our county and our community.
All right, anything else?
I would just like to add that I echo my fellow Commissioners' sentiments, I've never worked with a Planning Director whom I felt I could trust to the extent that I trust the wisdom and guidance that John has provided, and you'll be greatly missed, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak on public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment, we'll move on. Brings us to consent agenda, I'll go through each item, if anybody in the public wishes to have that item pulled, just raise your hand, anybody on the computer, raise your hand, and anybody on the commission, you know the drill. So the first item is the Vista 36 LLC special permit, is there anybody who wishes to have this item pulled? Seeing none, we'll leave this on consent. Item number two, Lost Coast Elixirs LLC, is there anybody who wishes to have this item pulled?
That's a continuance, Chair.
Oh, you're right, I didn't highlight it. So we'll leave that. Thank you, Thomas. Item number three, homegrown LLC in the Honeydew area, anybody who wishes to have this one pulled? I see a hand, so we'll pull this one. Okay, item number four, Mesro Farms LLC special permit in the Petrolia area, is there anybody who wishes to have this one pulled? Okay, see a hand, so pulled. Okay, that brings us, and I guess that was it. So, we have, on the consent agenda will be items number one, item number two, and that's it, so, go ahead, Thomas.
Just for clarification, the items that are pulled from consent, will those be after the Agenda's public hearings to give the items?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move items one and two of the consent calendar.
All right, thank you.
I'll second.
Have a motion second, any discussion? All right, Trip, roll call vote, please.
Sorry, if I can just clarify for the public that we're, number two, Lost Coast Elixirs is not being approved, we're just approving the continuance to the next meeting.
Correct.
Yes, thanks.
Roll call vote, starting with Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
Mike Newman.
Yes.
Alan Bonjio.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
And Melanie McCaver.
Yes.
All right, motion carries unanimous. Okay, so that will bring us to the Nordic Fish Farms, I believe. Yeah, so that'll bring us to Nordic Fish Farms in the Samoa area, and we'll get a staff report.
Thank you, so as a brief recap, on April 21st at 8:00 PM, the county and Nordic Aqua Farms California gave a very in-depth workshop presentation on the project, through the Chair, we did complete that presentation and answer all of the Planning Commission's questions at that time. This evening, we will be opening up for public comment, we were cut a little bit short, and so the continuance was for public to be able to voice their questions, concerns, comments on the workshop, this is not a action for decision.
Okay, is there any discussion from the commission before we open it up for public comment, anything for staff? Okay, we'll open this up to the public for public comment on the Nordic Fish Farms, if anybody in the audience cares to speak, just come up to the podium, if there's multiple people, line up so that it keeps things moving along, if you-
Hi, I'm Sam Newworth, this is what I believe about factory farming of fish, it's like factory farming of beef, it's not healthy, they're crowded, there's risks of disease, so you have to give them antibiotics, antivirals, and you have to dye the salmon red, because it doesn't come out red like a natural salmon, do you want to eat that salmon? It doesn't get to graze, you have to input large quantities of protein that you get artificially for a smaller output of fish, and you need cheap protein to do this, cheap protein means unhealthy food, you get the cheapest food in those fish, you get them as crowded as you can, and then you dump 12.5 million gallons a day into the ocean, and you never get any problems? A virus, one time, getting into our natural salmon, it only takes one time, who's monitoring that? Have you heard of a movie called Salmon Confidential? Salmon Confidential is a documentary from British Columbia where there's massive artificial factory fish farming, and it's destroyed their native salmon, completely destroyed it, I urge you all to look it up on the internet, it's widely available, the people who made that film were hounded and persecuted and sued, but it's an excellent film, they eventually got some scientists on board and documented that there's a release of pathogens that has killed the native salmon fishery in almost all of lower British Columbia. Now, we used to have a dairy industry here, what happened to it? It lost out to factory farming, the dairy industry is almost gone, and the dairy industry was the backbone of our culture and economy, so many jobs came indirectly from dairymen who needed to fix their pumps, who needed equipment, who paid for vets, ask the vets now how many dairies there are, I think there's two dairies left in Arcata. Factory farming is what destroyed the dairy industry, you don't get milk from Humboldt County, it's labeled Humboldt Milk, just like this might be fish that's labeled Humboldt County Fish, but Humboldt County Fish is at great risk from this project, because this project has, is, that's their competition, they have no incentive to protect the native fish, they don't want native fish to compete with, do you want to eat a native fish that grazed on kelp, or do you want to eat a factory farmed fish that was hypercrowded? So I think that the data has been cooked, I don't trust the data, did you say, um, Don?
Your time's up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Rosalila Legarres, I've lived in Humboldt County since 2003.
Get a little closer, please.
My name is Rosalila Legarres, I've lived in Humboldt County since 2003, as we all know, we're living under the sixth extinction, living in Humboldt County, our rain season, everyone who's lived here more than a couple of years know that it's been dramatically shifted. In New Zealand right now, where factory farming is done, 42% of the fish have died this year, the farmers are calling this the salmon in the coal mine. The farmers are speaking up about how they thought they had more time, they didn't think this would happen so fast, in 2018, there was 17% of the fish that passed away, now it's up to 42%, thousands of tons of salmon are being thrown into the waste. If this project comes here from Norway, it will be the biggest famine, factory farmed fish ever done in history, it's never been done in North America, it's never been studied, even under this Nordic Aqua Farms report, they got their information wrong, one of the biologists spoke up and said he wasn't even a part of this study, if they can't get their reports right in the DIR, how are they going to make sure no pathogens are released? And 40% of the fish in factory farming don't make it because of their genetic mutations, such as three eyes, lack of a fin, I know there's a big propaganda machine about sustainability, and how this will bring more jobs, I think it's about 80 jobs, but there's already a lot of local fisheries here, that's something we can take pride in, how we love our ocean, the ocean can't take it anymore, it's been taking the heat, 90% of the heat is absorbed by the ocean, we all feel it, we can do our adult games here, but we all know the truth, we're living under the sixth extinction, and factory farming of animals is not the way Humboldt County wants to be seen. This place is known as loving the earth, people who live here moved here because they wanted to protect the earth, this is about money, evil money, distorted money on the backbone of the goddess that supports all of life, all of your breathing, all the invisible energy that we try to ignore, and we try to just speak about money, the ocean sustains our lives, and ironically enough, is global warming going to be the thing that saves us?
Thirty seconds.
In Savage's article in the North Coast, it alluded to that, that maybe the bay will warm up so much, Nordic won't be able to farm there. Please consider the truth and not just money, there's many other ways we can get money, the earth can't take it anymore, especially the oceans, and especially not the salmon, we deny their intelligence, but we can't be born in freshwater, know how to swim thousands and thousands and thousands of miles without a map, into the ocean and then back again?
Your time's up, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, I'll go to the computer, and the first caller is Allison Willie.
Thank you, I have many concerns about that project, and I've filed, I think, at least five letters voicing my concerns, but today I just want to look at two things, fish disease and climate change, and so, my first question is, to protect our wild salmon from fish farm diseases, will Humboldt County require Nordic Aqua Farms to use brood stock that has been proven to be disease-free, using best practices disease testing, such as a viral disease development, or VDD biomarker panel of host transcriptional biomarkers? The reason I'm bringing this to your attention is there are up to 48 diseases associated with fish farms, the technology that's being proposed by the Nordic Aqua Farms is not sufficient to deal with industrial cleansers and stay functional and protect the wild salmon from the factory floor waste and the bacteria and diseases and fungus that make it out through the facility. So my next point is about climate change, to protect our warming climate, will Humboldt County do an independent energy demand analysis, scrutinizing the full build-out of the project using the 39.8 megawatts identified in the DEIR, and the potential build-out demand of 51.7 megawatts by comparing the energy demand of the Samoa facility with Nordic's proposed RES facility in Belfast, Maine? The Belfast, Maine facility is substantially smaller, and it's now thought to be using a proposed 31 megawatts, and so this much larger facility is going to have a higher demand, and I, and I want to add to that is, how is Humboldt County going to protect people from climate change when we have this huge megawatt demand, which could potentially be up to half of the demand of the entire county?
You have 30 seconds, thank you. Next caller is 2781.
Hello?
Welcome.
I would like to, I would like to know, and I don't know if you answer these questions now, but I put it out to the public to look into it, I have studied it, and the fish that you grow in your factory are fed poisons, such as antibiotics, because they're living in a situation that is not conducive to health, and they have to have special kinds of things fed to them, so they are essentially poisoned, and then you sell this to a public that eats it, and they're eating poison, and this is leading to many of the diseases of today. The other thing is Humboldt County counts on being known for being beautiful, can you assure us that your facility is beautiful, or is it yet another monstrosity dividing our skyline between earth and sky with something that our eye rejects is not beautiful? I think this is an important aspect of how we attract people to this county, and you were right there on the edge of the water, which brings me to my third question, have you considered in the future how you're going to deal with the waters rising? The ocean is definitely rising, there are islands now under the water that weren't there even 10 years ago, and how long do you expect it to be before you are inundated and your poisons in your factory are swept out to sea, into the bay, and into our creeks and rivers? These are my three questions I wish the audience to consider, and I certainly expect Nordic Fishery Farms to consider, and to answer publicly, because you will have to answer someday if you don't answer now, thank you and goodbye.
Thank you. Next caller's Public 7108.
Good evening, this is Bonnie Blackberry, and I'm calling in just to voice my concerns with this project, a huge concern is protecting the native salmon, that's a real big deal here in having this fish farm, that something could happen, and the wild salmon will be impacted, and hearing this stuff about the, what happens when you do a fish farm and have all these fish in close contact, and what kind of pathogens, and then what do you have to give them to keep them alive, and the fish diseases, all that stuff, that I just have a hard time believing is going to be able to be contained on site, so then it'll flush into the ocean, which has already got issues dealing with warming up and climate change, so, those are my, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this topic? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and bring it back to the commission, and I believe, Thomas, you had your hand up.
I was just asking two things for clarity, one is, when we, for clarity is, once the public speaks in person or Zoom, if you could close public comment between the two, so we don't get string public commenters, but there was less comments than I imagined, and I was just trying to get clarity on that note, what was that that was thrown out?
Oh, it was just to clarify that the federal judge put aside a DPO order for the PC fish farm that you were preparing for.
Okay, thank you.
I couldn't hear, sorry to speak up, I couldn't hear the response to Thomas's question.
I was just clarifying that the federal judge basically threw out an order to stop the fish farms from progressing in PC.
Got it, thanks.
All right, is there any other questions? Did staff want to respond to any of the questions that the public brought up, or?
I don't think so at this time, a lot of the questions that were raised, I thought, were addressed.
were addressed in our initial presentation and perhaps the public wasn't here to hear that. It is all information that's addressed in the EIR and FEIR and will certainly, if it's not there, be addressed in the staff report. So it will all be responded to.
All right. So we're not taking any action on this. So I suspect this will be coming back to us at some point.
Yes, it will. In fact, at the end of the night, I was going to ask the commission's indulgence to look at a special meeting in July, on July 14th.
Okay. We'll address that then. All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Thomas.
Just one statement. I don't remember which commenter, but they were talking about the beautiful skyline and stuff like that. And I don't know if anyone's... I got to tour the site and I would not call the current state of the site as beautiful. It was very dilapidated, in my opinion. I would agree with you. Can we please clarify that there's no outbursts from the audience?
No. No. You had your chance to come up and speak. Okay. Ma'am, stop.
Can we... If someone's disturbing, they can be asked to leave. Is that correct or incorrect?
Thank you.
You can't hear my mic?
No.
I can hear my mic in my ear right there.
Right now, you're okay.
Okay. Sorry about that. We're trying our best. Something must have changed because I'm not doing anything different.
Put it closer to me. I was just trying to... Yeah.
One of the things we may want to do is make sure that all the computers are muted so you're not getting feedback.
Okay.
Because there is feedback from someplace.
Josh, you're the one who's doing... Yeah. He's the one who's been doing mine. I did hear it there. All right. I'll try to speak closer. Everybody else do the same. All right. With that, we're going to move on to the Holgerson Minor Subdivision and Coastal Development Permit in the Myrtle Town area. And we'll take a staff report, please. There's staff report. I'll let you know when it's time for public comment. Yeah. Okay. Cut off one and say that that's it.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jacob Dunn and I'm the PSI Planner for Holgerson Construction. Holgerson Construction is applying for... There it goes. Sorry about that. Good evening. My name is Jacob Dunn. I'm the assigned planner for Holgerson Construction. Holgerson Construction is applying for a minor subdivision and a coastal development permit to approve the subdivision of one parcel and the four parcels and one remainder. Also included in the proposal is the construction of one duplex on each of the four new parcels. This project's located in the Myrtle Town area. Here's an aerial image of the location for Holgerson subdivision. The project is located on the north side of Edgewood Road, approximately 400 feet west of the intersection of Edgewood Road and Quaker Street in Eureka. Access to the proposed parcel would be provided by a 20-foot-wide improved private road with an existing 30-foot-wide access easement from the county-maintained Edgewood Road. The onsite roadway will be privately maintained through a homeowners association or an approved private maintenance agreement. The tentative map that you see here has been provided by the applicant with the exceptions that they've requested, which will be covered in the following slide. The minor subdivision proposes the creation of four parcels and a remainder. This parcel is located in the coastal zone. Therefore, a coastal development permit is required for the minor subdivision. The parcel is developed with a single-family residence, which will remain on the remainder parcel, and four structures that will be removed. The parcel is zoned single-family with a land use designation of residential low density with approximately 1.1 acres. The minimum parcel size for residential single-family zones is 5,000 square feet. Parcels one and two will be 7,192 square feet. Parcels three and four will be 8,468 square feet. The remaining parcel will be left with 14,600 square feet. Duplexes are proposed on each of these parcels and they'll be served with community water and sewer by Humboldt Community Services District. The duplex units on parcels one and two are going to be 1,080 square feet, 22 feet 5 inches tall with an attached 240 square foot one-car garage. And the duplex units on parcels three and four will be 1,200 square feet with 20... Sorry, 23 feet 5 inches tall with an attached 276 square foot one-car garage. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared and circulated, which found that the impacts of the project should be less than significant with mitigation. Conditions have been included in the staff report to ensure compliance with the required mitigation measures. Something to note is that the implementation of the California Home Act, also known as Senate Bill 9, would allow two residential units, such as these duplexes, within a single-family residential zone to be considered ministerially without discretionary review or hearing. Therefore, the approval of the proposed subdivision would allow for the development of the proposed duplex units without discretionary review. As a result of this, the planning commission has the authority to approve or deny the subdivision. However, once the lots are created, state law mandates that the county approve the proposed duplexes. The applicant has submitted exception request letters to staff requesting exceptions for the requirements to a paved access road, concrete sidewalk, curb, and gutter improvements, and to reduce the minimum easement dedication width of 40 feet to 30 feet for the access road. Letters have been submitted addressing the three conditions that must be met for an exception to be granted pursuant to Humboldt County Code Section 325-9, including: One, there are special circumstances or conditions affecting said property. Two, the exception is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property right of the owner. And three, the granting of the exception will not be detrimental to public welfare or injurious to other property in the territory of said property which said property is situated. The county has reviewed these exception requests and believed that the approval of a reduced right-of-way would not jeopardize the health and safety of the new and existing residents and therefore could be approved. The Public Works Department and Planning and Building Department do not, however, support the additional exception requests. The map displayed here, that you'll see on the slide, has been provided by Public Works to represent what the site plan looks like with the conditions that have been placed on the project and the supported exception request for the reduced right-of-way. The project was originally noticed for the April 7th Planning Commission hearing, which was continued. Public comment was still received at that time and concerns were raised regarding the adequacy of proposed drainage, roadway, parking, trash removal designs, and the proposed duplexes fitting with the neighborhood aesthetics. Given the concerns that came up during that hearing, a neighborhood meeting was held on May 10th in front of the property to gather input from the neighbors and discuss the project. Concerns were raised at that meeting regarding the adequacy of the proposed drainage, specifically the success of a retention basin during storm events and overflow to neighboring parcels, mosquito infestation, and grading for the basin, which may damage the existing trees on the adjacent parcel. According to the neighbors, current conditions lead to flooding on the neighboring parcels and percolation is not adequate due to clay in the soils. There is concern about a reduced roadway, which the public believes would not be capable of supporting parking, trash removal, emergency services, and a turnaround area. Some of the other concerns that came up regarded solar shading on neighboring trees in a greenhouse, speeding on Edgewood Road, and the cost of housing. These public concerns about the project have been included and addressed in the staff report. The tentative map was updated on May 20th to include a fire truck turnaround area between the parcels three and four, two 10-foot lanes for ingress and egress, and an eight-foot parking lane have been added to support traffic for emergency services. The increased road width should be adequate to support trash removal. However, the turnaround as depicted by the applicant's site plan is not consistent with required setbacks in the residential single-family zone. The turnaround is part of the road access easement, which means that it has to have a setback of five feet from the structures. Condition of approval item number 21 has been added to be... Has been added so that the duplexes on parcels three and four need to be redesigned to meet the required setbacks or that they follow the Public Works design, which is shown... To be shown on the final subdivision map. The applicant submitted evidence of an appraisal report to acquire drainage easement to allow water to be conveyed and discharged into circle drive, but unfortunately, the applicant was unable to secure an easement and subsequently designed the project to accommodate drainage onsite with the retention system. Due to concerns from the public, a percolation test was conducted on May 16th and 17th to determine if the retention system was capable of supporting a new development. The test was performed in accordance with Humboldt County Onsite Wastewater Treatment Systems Regulations and Technical Manual. The test was done by stimulating rainfall conditions by applying water to the soil at measured levels. They dug three test holes to a depth of 36 inches with an additional two inches of gravel at the base, which were soaked for 24 hours. During each test, during the tests, the holes were filled with at least 12 inches of water, which were left to percolate into the soil for exactly an hour, and the results in depths were observed and recorded. Each hole was then refilled to repeat the process and show consistency of percolation rates across multiple tests. The average percolation rate across all three pits was 5.22 inches per hour, which is sufficient to ensure that there is no net increase in stormwater runoff off the site as a result of the development of the project. Mosquito infestation should not occur if the retention basin percolates correctly. While this test may not necessarily meet the requirements of Department of Environmental Health or for percolation, the simulation testing is useful to show that the tentative design of the subdivision entitlement... Sorry, that the design of the stormwater retention system is going to be feasible for the soils in the area. Typically, the subdivision entitlement approval phase percolation testing is not required as it's usually required later in the development process prior to filing a... A development permit. A formal hydraulic report and drainage report will be required to be submitted as part of the conditions of approval for submitting construction plans. These units are also considered affordable by design due to the size of the units and the lots and is found to be consistent with the third guiding principle of the Humboldt County General Plan, which states promoting and facilitating the creation of affordable housing opportunities to meet current and future demands for all income levels. This concludes my presentation. Myself and staff will be available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas, you have a question first half?
So the last one, you were talking about the drainage. If this is approved and it goes through, they are not allowed to do any grading or begin construction until Public Works signs off on their drainage report. If I read correctly, is that correct or incorrect?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike?
That was along the same lines. I was looking at 3.0 drainage, 3.1 drainage issues. And it says applicants responsible to correct any involved drainage problems associated with the subdivision to the satisfaction of this department. What exactly does that mean?
Bob Rockle, Deputy Director, Public Works. That condition is a catch-all to go ahead and address concerns that may be found out during the construction of a project where there could be an isolated drainage issue that needs to get fixed that no one was able to determine at the time of the tentative map. And also as well...
We can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Just pull it closer.
Check, check.
Yeah.
And it will ensure that any deficiencies that might exist within the approved improvement plans, as well as conditions that were found on the ground, are properly taken care of.
So are those standards set up someplace or is it kind of a, as you said, a catch-all? So what kind of standards are those for those conditions? Are those outlined someplace or is it?
It's more of the unknown sort of an issue. For instance, if they were tying in sidewalk, curb gutter sidewalk into an existing piece of curb gutter sidewalk and there was a bird bath there, they would need to go ahead and correct the bird bath that exists as part of their project. We're not going to go ahead and leave a minor drainage issue as a result of new work that's being constructed. And that's something that may not be evident at the plan level. It usually becomes evident during construction. I do have a brief PowerPoint presentation for the project I'd like to go through. It might help answer some of the questions that the commission may have.
Oh, I thought we were over with.
That's what I thought, too. I didn't know that there was going to be a presentation. So why don't you go ahead and do that and then we'll ask questions.
So this is an aerial with the proposed project superimposed upon it. It shows the project as conditioned by Public Works with curb gutter sidewalk. It shows the amount of parking that is available on Edgewood Street. It also shows the parking that would also be available on the unnamed access roads serving the project. It also shows the parking that is available onsite for each property.
I just want to make sure that we're pointing those out exactly. Those are the yellow triangles that you're talking about for parking?
That's correct.
Sorry, let the public hear what my question was. Was about the yellow triangles being the depicted parking spots on this particular illustration. Is what I was asking.
Correct. That represents the overall parking that's available to the entire community. And that's in addition to the required parking that every parcel has to provide appropriate amount of parking onsite.
So are the two or four for each duplex, is that for each duplex, four spots or just two?
It would be two spots per each unit and they're in tandem.
Okay. And that's outside of each garage or inside a garage?
There's one in a garage and one in the driveway in front of it.
Okay. So the first one closest to the brown spots are in the garage and the second one is sitting outside in the driveway. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
In case we need it, I have a little bit more of a blow-up of what the site looks like. This is an artistic rendering of what the access road would look like. It would have an urban-style driveway apron leading into it. And then starting from the fence on the right-hand side, there would be an eight-foot shoulder, a 20-foot travel lane, an eight-foot parking lane. The applicant can go ahead and have a landscape strip or put the sidewalk curb adjacent. And that's essentially what the roadway would look like coming in from the street. One of the things that came up along the way with our latest set of conditions for the project, we did update the graphics within our conditions of approval, but the language for the road contains some typographical errors. And this is just to clarify that when the project's approved, it will have a 28-foot-wide paved road, curb gutter sidewalk. The one thing I would like to point out, I have reached out to Humboldt Bay Fire to find out specifics about the minimum width necessary for ingress, egress... find out specifics about the minimum width necessary for ingress, egress for this particular project. Bill Reynolds is currently out of the office. I was not able to talk to him about the project. When the project is approved, Public Works is agreeable to having a narrower roadway for this project. For the number of parcels being served by it, a 20-foot wide road, which would be a 12-foot wide drive aisle and an eight-foot wide parking lane is adequate for the total number of units being served, and Public Works can support a narrower road section subject to Humboldt Bay Fire accepting a narrower section. So if the project is approved, I would encourage the commission to include language that allows the width of the roadway to be reduced as may be allowed by Humboldt Bay Fire. Right now, the drainage pattern is the property slopes from the south to the north, and the water is in a sheet-flow type condition, slowly migrating its way towards Circle Drive. Once it gets onto Circle Drive, it goes along the curb on Circle Drive to 18th, and goes along 18th Street to the corner of Quaker and 18th where there's a drainage inlet. And then from there, the stormwater continues to the east. On Circle Drive, there were concerns of flooding on the roadway. On one of the recent storm events that we had, I did personally go out to observe the drainage that was occurring there. There are isolated puddles as a result of the cross slope from the crown of the road to the gutter not being uniform. I did not observe evidence of flooding. The sorts of isolated puddles that you see here are the sorts of things that are typically corrected in the future at the time that the road is overlaid. That's when the crown slope is restored to being uniform. Another picture showing the isolated puddles near the corner. The project is proposing a stormwater retention basin that's designed to capture the 100-year storm based upon full build-out of the project. It's proposed to be located on the north side of the property. The preliminary percolation tests demonstrate that the ground perks, and all final designs are to be based upon the DHHA standards for septic system design to ensure that the ground does perk appropriately. The project will include an overflow weir that will release water in a sheet-flow condition in the event that the basin becomes full. I do want to go ahead and point out that under drainage law, an upstream property owner does have the right to go ahead and discharge stormwater on a downstream property. This project is proposing to go ahead and mitigate the increased stormwater runoff coming from the developed site through the detention basin, and only discharge stormwater in a sheet-flow condition for when the basin is overcapacitated. That concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Thomas.
So, through the chair, my question, there's no way with via underground piping or pumping to get that drainage the other way?
That's a good question. The developer has approached the property owners to the north on Circle Drive to inquire about getting a drainage easement to be able to direct the stormwater in a more controlled fashion to the north. That is something that is still a possibility if the owners to the north are receptive to it. I know that the subdivider has had difficulties in trying to negotiate what those drainage improvements may be like. That's something that Public Works can assist the developer with as the project moves forward to see if there is a way for the subdivider and the property owners on Circle to come to a consensus about how to better address the drainage leaving the Holgerson property and making its way to Circle Drive.
I apologize if I didn't have a clear, my question wasn't clear enough. I did hear actually that drainage easement was available for, I think it was like $600,000 or something in public testimony re-received. Maybe I misheard the property owner, but she did offer to sell the whole property for around $600. I meant to pump the water via pumps back the other way, not to the north, to the south, because there is a street out there, so I would be under the impression that there is some sort of stormwater drainage out that way.
Humboldt Bay Fire, first now. I'm atwood, that's-
We, no. Pumping the water out to Edgewood then results in a gutter flow similar to what's on 18th Street where it flowed to the intersection of Quaker and Edgewood where there's drainage inlets there for the stormwater. The, the challenge with having mechanical systems of that nature is in the event that there's a power failure, or in the event of a pump failure, it may not be adequate to go ahead and pump the system out.
Okay, thank you.
We do also have the engineers here who have a presentation they would like to give, if that's-
Okay. Would have been nice to know about the presentations at the beginning.
Sorry about that.
I have a quick question regarding the picture, if I could. So Chair-
Go ahead.
Picture of the, the Circle Drive with the puddles that you showed there, Bob, was that from this past Saturday?
They were from earlier in May.
How much was the rainfall at that time?
There was a minor amount of water in the gutters at that point in time. The pictures demonstrate where the bellies in the asphalt are that are collecting water in a puddle-type condition.
So, the pictures that we've had submitted from those property owners there would probably be correct? Is that what you're saying as well?
Any pictures that show water on the road would be correct, whether it was taken by myself or taken by the public.
Yeah, that was in that corner there. It was pretty darn full from what I recollect, and it looked like it was not flowing back on over to the other street, 18th, and then on to that drainage.
There's a certain amount of vegetation growing between the asphalt and the concrete curb that does slow down the flow of water. If the owners out there were weed-whacking and trimming the vegetation down that's growing up between the curb and the asphalt, it would improve the flow of drainage.
Okay. All right. Noah's had his hand up for quite a while, so I'm going to give him a chance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bronkel, I want to thank you for that presentation. That was really, really helpful to me in envisioning the, the issues better and answered a couple of my questions, but it still raises a couple of questions for me. One is, I just want to make sure I understood. Were you saying that while the project proponent is agreeing to do this drainage basin at the north end of the property, did you say that under drainage law, they would not be required to do that? In other words, they could just allow the drainage to flow as it flows off the property?
What I'm indicating is that upstream property owners have the right to discharge stormwater on the downstream properties, and it's unreasonable for a downstream property owner to prevent an upstream property owner from doing so. However, the upstream property owner must do so in a way that is not detrimental or damaging to a downstream property owner. Hence, the drainage retention basin will go ahead and address that to ensure that the downstream property owner is not inundated with excessive amounts of runoff greater than what the existing condition is.
Okay, thanks. And then about the basin itself, a number of neighbors who oppose or are concerned are citing the belief that the basin will be a quote-unquote "maintenance nightmare" for the tenants, implying that for the basin to properly function, it needs a lot of maintenance. Can you say anything about whether that's true, whether, how much, and how frequent maintenance it would require?
Typically, these sorts of basins are approved with other subdivision projects that your commission has approved. They function quite well. Typically, landowners go ahead and mow them on a regular basis. They're typically designed with side slopes that aren't very steep, that you can get your mower in to be able to go ahead and mow it. Obviously, in the wintertime, if it's kind of sloggy and muddy at the bottom, you may not be mowing it at that time, but typically, we're not seeing grass grow too much during the, the winter months. Other than normal mowing, it shouldn't require any maintenance to it.
Okay, that's good to know, because I was sort of getting the impression it had to be dug out yearly or something like that, but, but you're saying it doesn't seem that's the case. Now, about the, the access issues, you said, if I understood you correctly, that the Humboldt Bay Fire District, have they not responded yet to questions of the adequacy of either the access width or the turnaround plan for their vehicles? Is that, is that a question that's still outstanding?
The project, as proposed by the subdivider's latest head of the map, and as well by Public Works, includes a design that's in full compliance with the FIRE code.
Okay, so that, that should, I mean, that should satisfy their requirements. And then I guess my last question is just, you know, I, I appreciate that while you are objecting to a couple of the exception requests, that you are recommending approval of the width of the easement for the unnamed road from 40 feet to 30 feet. But given the concerns raised about, you know, traffic flow, safety vehicle turnaround, parking, and even drainage, I just wondered if you could say, what is the, what is the argument against agreeing to that narrowing request? In other words, what would be the argument for the benefit of keeping the access width easement to 40 feet instead of 30 feet? And could the, and do you, do you know how the project would need to be revised? In other words, could it still in fact accommodate four parcels plus the remainder if we were to deny that request and keep the required width at 40 feet?
The exception request for a narrow right-ofway applies to the applicant's tentative map in that they're proposing a 20-foot wide drive aisle, gravel drive, or 28-foot wide drive aisle to get back to go ahead and serve the properties, which would fit within the existing 30-foot easement. What the applicant is trying to do with their exception request is there are two parcels to the east that take access across the whole Holgerson property, and those two properties have an existing 30-foot wide easement across the Holgerson property. The idea that the subdivider's attempting to do is to not have an easement that's any wider than what's currently there. So if the project is approved, accepting all of the applicant's exception requests, the 30-foot wide access easement is more than adequate for what the applicant's proposing.
Answer that question.
Okay, I mean, would, would the benefit, just, just to say though, I, I do understand that, that makes sense, but would it be the case that if the, that exception request were denied and we required the 40-foot easement, could it perhaps allow for the other side of that road to have additional parking? Would that be a benefit of denying the exception request?
The project as proposed by Public Works will have the availability of a shoulder on the east side of the road as an undeveloped shoulder where vehicles could be parked. It includes a 20-foot travelway, and it also includes a eight-foot parking lane on the west side of the road. So the way that the project is conditioned by Public Works, it essentially creates parking lanes on both sides of the road and does need an easement that's wider than 30 feet.
Okay, thanks so much, Mr. Bronkel.
So again, the, the exception request for the right-ofway width is only applicable when the other exception requests that the applicant is asking for are approved by the commission.
Sorry, could, I didn't, were you saying that the exception request for the narrower access easement would only be recommended for approval if the other two exceptions are denied for the pavement and the curb and gutter?
If, if all the exception requests should be approved as a package, meaning that if you're going to approve not having curb gutter sidewalk out there, you're going to approve not having a paved surface, then it's appropriate to go ahead and also approve the reduced right-ofway.
I'm sorry to keep asking questions, but I thought the recommendation of Public Works was that we deny the exception request for not paving and deny the request to not have curb and gutter.
That's correct.
But you are recommending that we approve the request for narrowing the access easement?
We can be, and if the other portions are approved, then it makes sense to reduce the right-ofway.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Melanie is next, and Brian's had his hand up, then.
I, I think we'll probably revisit that last question with the engineer. I think we'll probably revisit that last question with the engineers after their report. My question was regarding the storage basin, so I know that last time we heard that, well, and again today, that if that overflows, then, you know, that's likely to go into the adjacent properties. And at the same time, there was an allusion to limitations that precluded the storage basin being larger or being modified in some way to accommodate more water, and I was wondering if you could go into the reasons as to why that, why those limitations exist?
At this particular location, the, these lots are larger in size. There is ample room to go ahead and increase the size of the retention basin as needed to accommodate the final hydraulics and hydrology for the, for the project. If the lot sizes were the traditional 5,000-square-foot lot sizes that you typically see in other urban areas, and we're fighting to have enough room for a house and the stormwater retention system, then there could be challenges in making the system work. These lots are much generous in size and have ample room to go ahead and provide whatever size will ultimately be needed to go ahead and make the basin work.
Okay, well, perhaps this question could be reserved for the engineers, but I'm just wondering why the basin isn't planned to be larger. I'd just like to see the data that went into that decision on the size of the storage basin.
Maybe the engineer can answer that one when we get to him. Brian's been waiting, so go ahead, Brian, and then Thomas will be after him.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is just a question for my own edification, but we've done lots of, or at least a number of these detention basins, but I'm just curious how we avoid creating wetlands or ESHA if it's in the coastal zone, or is that not at all a consideration?
Through proper mowing and maintenance of it, it tends to prevent the growth of those sorts of features. When they are draining properly, the ground dries out and it's available for use during the dry season for other things to occur, for picnic tables, playground sets, and other outdoor activities. So these things are really designed to be a complement to the project in that when maintained, properly mowed, it can be used for other purposes and won't necessarily take on the characteristics of a wetland.
Are there any conditions of approval that help ensure that it remains outside the definition of an ESHA? Or again, are we not concerned about that? And that, and that's really like a question I would ask for perhaps the director, the coastal expert.
Your excellence. Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell. So typically, facilities that are managed-
So typically, facilities that are managed for storm drain as storm drain facilities would not be considered ESHA. They obviously will have soil that can become hydric over time, they could even support wetland vegetation, they obviously will have water in them. And those, in the coastal zone, it's a one parameter definition, so you could argue that they are wet, they become ESHA or wetlands, but the reality is, is that there are exemptions for storm drain facilities.
All right, thank you very much for clarifying that for me, appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Director Thomas, and then hopefully, we can get to the engineer.
Just a clarifying question, and maybe through the chair for Mr. Bronkle. I heard, I know there's four parcels that are going to use this, utilize this road, but did I hear correctly, there's also two other parcels that have access through here, so it'd be six parcels?
That's correct, there are two parcels on the east side that take access from it, one at the very back of the road, and then one right next to it at the end. If Trip wants to bring the diagram up, we can go ahead and take a look at it.
But the reason I ask the question is for clarification of how many parcels we'll be utilizing this less-than-40-foot easement. So, thank you.
All right, so let's get the, I didn't know that there was going to be presentations from multiple people, so let's get the engineer to give his presentation, then we can get to the public comment. So, thank you, Mr. Bronkle, go ahead.
So, to be clear, the engineer being referenced is the applicant's agent.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead and go, come up to the podium, please.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Mike Taylor, I'm with Atlas Engineering, I am the principal engineer. We are a small, local firm out of Arcata, and we're representing Mr. Holgerson tonight for this subdivision. First of all, thank you to the commissioners for your time tonight, and thank you to Humboldt County for all your efforts you put in, this has been quite a road to hoe. Four years later, I will start with this simple comment, we are talking about a minor subdivision proposing four additional residential lots within Myrtle Town neighborhood. All of this is within basic zoning allowances, and there's been quite a bit of evolution. You know, it started as something with only a few lots, the county seemed to have some interest in seeing more development on this property due to, you know, the state requirements and the county requirements to produce more housing. So, the client was led down a road of suggestion of you should think about ADUs and coastal development permits this time, and maybe go down this duplex road, which now has become, you know, easily approvable. But that was not exactly where we started, we started with the agreement, we just want to do a minor subdivision, we wanted to avoid all of the intricacies of big development, and we wanted to not really have any curbs, gutters, sidewalks, we wanted to try to keep it gravel, we felt like that fit the nature of the neighborhood a little bit. When you walk around, we're going to have a presentation shortly, we'll show you how a lot of other subdivisions in this neighborhood look, and they're going to be on par with what our exception requests are. So it's not, you know, crybaby kind of an approach that we don't want to do this, it's that it does seem acceptable, and we're going to get to, you know, you're hearing it, the biggest concern here is drainage, all right? So everyone has kind of voiced their comments, we went to a meeting with all of the local neighbors, and we heard their comments, we tried to incorporate all of them. We don't have our map up, but you'll see, we did a 30-foot-wide by 50-foot paved entry, that would give you the two 10-foot lanes, eight-foot parking on one side, and then the additional two-foot strip allows for some trash can storage up along the street, up along the fence line there. We shortened the apron to 18 feet so that we'd actually have a four-foot trash area, but again, everything in code compliance, so try to hear what the neighbors were saying to avoid trash in terms of the basin. Well, again, let me get back to it, so drainage, particularly the north lots, those, one of the biggest concerns, and also, they wanted to see improvements to the access road, including widening, parking, and trash collection, and there were concerns about building heights. So to address the concerns about the access road, I've discussed that. We only envision there being parking on one side, that's what the conditions of approval talk about that are in front of you today. Yesterday, we received an updated set of plans that you just saw, that showed a lot of paving, a lot of sidewalks, a lot of parking spaces. There are 32 parking spaces in a subdivision for four new lots. That's a lot, that's more than we need. So this was all kind of new to me, so I don't have a lot of, didn't have a lot of time to prepare, but I wanted to come out here and say, you know, again, we think these exception requests make sense, we think we've heard the concerns of the neighbors, we think we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's. In regards to the building heights, we've set these buildings in as far as possible to give a big backyard, not only for the people who are going to own these homes in the future, but also so that we're not blocking solar for other neighbors, or shading them out, or destroying their views. Feel like there was a compassionate approach to this? That all made sense to me. There also were concerns that there weren't other two-story houses in the neighborhood, and there are, you could see them at the meeting, the end of the lot has a huge two-story house that just got re-roofed, and you can see it from all over the Myrtle Town area. So these buildings won't be out of character, they're four-and-12 roof pitches, they're eight-foot plates, they're very modest, right? Yes, they are two stories, yes, they have become duplexes, but none of this is outside of the realm of what the zoning code allows, this is all very normal, even been discussed, these are bigger than normal lots, they could be 5,000, we're pushing 7, 8, 14,000 square-foot lots here. In terms of the drainage, again, let's talk about the real heart of the matter, we've known from the beginning that this was a concern, the owner told us, the county told us, and three weeks ago, I found out that the neighbors were concerned too. I did not realize there was so much neighborhood comment, I'm happy that you came out and made your voices heard, we hope that we've done you justice and done the right thing. So to address it, we designed a, and hopefully this answers some of your questions, we designed for a half-inch per hour percolation rate, that is the bare minimum that any soil percolates, all soil perks a little bit, all right, can be very slowly. When we ran our tests at the request of the neighborhood, three test pits perked, one of them, obviously was in a lump of clay, it did perk at one inch per hour, still twice as fast as we'd assumed, but not as fast as the other pits, they perked at four and five inches per hour. So, once you get in there and scrape it, it's probably going to perk just fine, definitely be better than our code minimums that we applied. To talk about capacity, we designed for a 100-year storm versus a two-year storm. What Bob Bronkle's getting at is that the two-year storm water is allowed to flow off of the site with disregard, unfortunately, you know, that's just the historical evidence or the historical flow off the property. The rest of the water, we're containing in the basin, we're basically building a tank back there to capture all the water, the county requires a 40% increase on top of the design capacity we calculate. Our basin right now is at over 70% more, so we're almost double the capacity for the 1964 flood, all right, that's the kind of storm we're designing for. This basin is as big as most residential pools, you know, it's huge. I know it doesn't look that way on paper sometimes to people, I have done some of these with Bob, when we didn't have an emergency overflow, and when I was a younger man, I thought, man, I hope this works out. Those people have not called me yet. I do believe that these systems work, that it's going to percolate, and that we have a ton of capacity here. My concern with this newer map that we just saw is that everything now has been thrown out, and now there's parking on both sides, and now there's sidewalks all the way, and it's paved all the way to the back. There's a ribbon gutter that runs through the basin, this is all more impervious paving, it's not going to infiltrate, and it's definitely going to go right to that neighbor's backyard, all right? We're going to go in the basin, as we add more impervious pavement, we're going to have to make that basin bigger, and no problem, we'll do it. But I can say, this was a shock to both me and the owner, that the county seems to, after all these years, not be hearing our exception request, and instead going, well, the day before, we're going to present this idea. And so I'm asking you guys, please hear the exception request that we're putting out there. The basin will be vegetated, grassed, will not affect any neighboring trees or landscaping, if anything, it's going to capture water and feed those trees. There are some mature trees to the west side, those have been identified, they're great, we're not going to mess with them, our pit will be two-and-a-half feet deep, that's not going to kill 60-year-old trees. It's also going to be 15 feet away from any starch of their roots, and then we're going to taper in from there. So it's, I, again, have done this for a living, gone up against redwood trees, I don't think that tree is going to be of concern, I think they're going to be fine. The water will perk quickly, within 24 hours, they're asking for 48 per, the county, we'll be doing it in half that time or faster. And I believe that when we do drainage basins to prevent people from filling them in, we're going to make them deep, and we're going to make them designated, so you know what it is, and you're not going to be able to go in there and just fill it in with some roses and some gravel, it's going to be a real ditch, it's going to be a real basin. These are the ways that these things are maintained, two-year maintenance plan will be followed, every six months, someone's out there fooling with it, then every five years, someone's fooling with it. That is how these things are then vegetated and developed, so at some point, it is possibly acting like a wetland and doing exactly what it should be doing. So, let's go ahead and look at the character of the neighborhood, so talking about that, let's talk about why we think it fits to not have all these improvements. So, this is an overview, the yellow hatch line is our subdivision, right there in the middle. We sort of show you on the perimeter, the nearest gas station is over a half-mile away, 3,000 feet away, the hospital, because of a cut-through through Lucas, is almost a mile away, that's probably the nearest commercial center, if you want to call it one. The nearest schools are almost a mile away at Lafayette and at Pacific View. This is not in the heart of a commercial district, the neighbors, in fact, pride themselves on their semi-rural and quaint and quiet neighborhood. So we're going to go in order, you can see Exhibit 1 is going to be right at Circle Drive, and then we're going to stay sort of in the area, Exhibit 3 will be right near the vector pools, right near our site. I'm sorry?
Yeah, because people outside can't hear you.
Absolutely, so we're going to jump around, we're not going to start in the middle necessarily spread out, but I want to point out in particular, Exhibits like 4, 5, and 13, those are all going to be very close to our site. So if you want to go ahead, we're just going to start with it. So Exhibit 1 is going to be Circle Drive, go ahead, next slide. Circle Drive, these are the houses we're talking about, there is the low corner in the far distance up against the power pole, Circle Drive seems to unfortunately have some poor drainage issues, but it does eventually all flow out, you'll see though at Circle Drive, no gutter, one reason is probably having issues. But again, sidewalk on both sides, normal street, but it is paved, half sidewalks, but yeah, no gutters, next. No gutter at Highland, next. So these are mine, we'll build into it, here's Vector Aquatics Center, this building was remodeled in 2012, we were a part of the structural end of it. This is a rehabilitation center, it went through review and is exempted of a sidewalk, I know that for a fact, there's no sidewalk, no curb and gutter, it leads to a rehabilitation center, it is near bus stops, near a church, near a main road, it has been exempted in the last 10 years. Thank you so much, I appreciate the comments, next slide. All right, here's Bass Lane, serves three parcels, subdivision. There is no sidewalk, no curb and gutter, there is a frontage which we will be doing, and there is pavement, next. Teal Lane, serves several units, not in very good condition, no curbs, no gutters, no sidewalks, next. These are all within two, three, four blocks from our subdivision. Trinity Street goes to a bunch of really nice homes, for some reason, it has no sidewalks, no curbs, no gutters. Next, seven parcels, we're talking about four parcels. Hillcrest is a major thoroughfare, connects from Trinity to Glenwood, it is two blocks from this property, it does not even have a sidewalk, this is probably a county-maintained road, next. Oak Ridge Terrace Service serves five parcels, no sidewalks, next. Here's another subdivision with a gravel road, no frontage improvements, next. Again, these are all very close to our site, this serves three parcels, no defined roadway, no sidewalks within the subdivision, next. Sorry to beat a dead horse, but this is all right in, right in front of us. Here is another parcel, looks like probably three parcels here, no sidewalk, no curb and gutter, serves three parcels, yep.
Dorson subdivision, parcel.
Oh, we're going to get into the best ones, number 13.
Hey, no talking with the public, and the public needs to keep quiet, you'll get your turn at the mic, I'm trying, let him finish, and you guys will get your opportunity.
All right, so we're going to get a little more into the heart of the matter here, Tracy Court, serves six parcels, no sidewalk, no curb and gutter, parcel box at the front, very similar to what we're going to propose, we'll have ADA frontage, but this is what streets look like in Myrtle Town. Next exhibit, 13, Brendel Lane, this is a newer subdivision, nice pavement, nice houses, the first 50 feet are paved with a curb, the curb ends, AC curb does not continue for the full length of the road, says the note there on the side, there's no sidewalks on this road, there's no curbs and gutters, brand-new homes, very nice, next. This is Lafayette School directly across the street, this is the county's Safe routes to school improvements, with a dropped DI in the back and cracked asphalt, also, no sidewalks, no curb and gutter. We're getting into the end, these last two, yep. Off of this road, two more, Cindy Lane, serves three parcels, next. Tremont Street, serves five parcels, I'm sorry, it serves three parcels, house on the left is newer. Again, this is a subdivision in Myrtle Town. All right, so, we beat a dead horse there, but now you've seen, this is not, these are not pleased, these are just saying, this is what's normal. As you can see, we believe the side development, sidewalk improvements do not contribute in any way to this development, there's no large commercial districts nearby, this sidewalk will never connect to another sidewalk anywhere, it'll never go through to Circle Drive, the access road will be pitched to the west, it's going to flow into what we would hope would be an LID feature, that would then flow out to the basin. If we put a curb and gutter in, we're not going to get to an LID feature, we're just going to catch the water, and while that previous thing from the county was showing a ribbon gutter all the way to the basin, there's not even going to be infiltration, filtration, sediment, oil, there's no filtering that way. I really think we should consider having less hardscape and more natural water flow, this would be the way to do better with the drainage. By the numbers, pound for pound, if the lot sits today, I'm a math guy, the four proposed homes are going to house eight new families in Humboldt County, 6,800-square-foot footprint for the building, two stories, that represents 14% of this lot. Just paving the road 30 feet wide, 240 feet represents 15% of the lot, that paving is more coverage than the houses are. Adding on another 10 feet, the county now wants a 36-foot wide road with parking on both sides for some reason, now we're up to 20%, is just paved, add sidewalks at 5%, add the ribbon gutter at 3%, add the turnaround extension and paved driveways, another 5%, you are at 30% of the lot is paved now, 14% of its houses, combine those, we're at 44% coverage, we have covered almost 50% of this lot with hardscape, and we're worried about flooding out the people in the back, it doesn't make any sense, all right? These exception requests are here because, yes, it is green development, we're going towards LID, we're treating our water on-site, these are the things that we believe in, these are the things we're asked to do. I would just encourage you to hear what we're saying, I appreciate the presentation and the discussion about water flow, but this is about these exception requests, and I don't think that the map that was provided as a staff alternative is acceptable, and I hope that you will just approve the Atlas Engineering map as provided, if you have any questions, I'm happy to hear them.
All right, stay there, is there questions, go ahead, Thomas.
So I heard in your presentation that this proposed driveway is only to four parcels, but I do believe I heard that there's more than one other partial that has access through the driveway, is that correct or incorrect?
You are correct, there are, it sounds like, three other parcels that access it, I guess I'm looking at as four new parcels. This 30-foot gravel driveway has served those properties without problem, without flooding for a long time, so yes, we're adding four new parcels.
Thank you, so the reason for my question is health and safety, like how the safety access of how many parcels are going to be on that said roadway, that's, so thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, any other questions for them? I have one for you then, since I don't see any other hands. So, if, this might be for you or for Director Bronkle, but if that neighboring parcel does develop, I'm going to assume that they would have to widen the road for their side of it, so we would eventually get to county standard 40-ish feet, no? If they develop that property next door, they're not going to have to incur any of the parking on that driveway, on that road.
The properties to the east are already developed.
I thought you said that there was two more lots that could be there, or there was potential to do two more there.
That's what I was trying to figure out how that was going to happen.
Based on the way the aerial looks, unless structures are demolished, it doesn't appear that there is much subdivision potential along the east side of the property there.
That's what I was seeing from the pictures, that's why I was kind of wondering what was going to happen there, so, okay. Any other questions for the engineer? Oh, Noah, go ahead.
Thank you, I didn't see him, I'm looking over here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Taylor, thank you for that presentation, I just have a couple of questions for you. First of all, and one, one is sort of following up on what I asked Mr. Bronkle, but you spoke about the detention basin, and I thought I heard you say something about it'll have six-month maintenance and five-year maintenance, and I may have not been understanding, but can you tell me specifically what maintenance you believe would be required of the detention basin, you know, in the... You know, in, in the, uh, regular and the occasional longer-term frame in order to maintain its continued viability?
Some of this is a little nerdier talk that maybe you guys don't get into, but when we get past the tentative map, there becomes a maintenance plan that is required to be on file. A standard maintenance plan requires inspection during heavy rainstorms and every six months for the first two years. Excuse me?
I can hear him fine.
Test, test. Uh, so it could be, uh, and then usually every five years. But normally if there was a blowout or if there was an event, someone would come out there. Um, that would be, you know, to answer the neighbor's concerns, who takes control? Who's in charge? If someone were to fill in the whole basin with rocks, yes, there would be flooding. And then Public Works would come out and say, what happened here? To answer your question, um, Commissioner Levy, it would be up to the owner as, uh, no, uh, excuse me. Neil Holgerson would maintain that for at least the first two years. If it was a bigger type of a project, it would be things like making sure all the DI's were protected, uh, cleaning out outflow pipes. Um, in this case, it's only gonna be mowing and maintaining, seeding it right away, making sure vegetation sticks, uh, probably pulling out any non-native species. It would be very basic because this is just a big pit in the ground. This is an oversized empty swimming pool that will capture all the water and then let the water infiltrate during a giant, giant storm. Um, but to answer your question, maintenance will be very general. You know, the overflow, we will have to be maintained and made sure there's no blowouts. Obviously, it would be addressed if there ever was a blowout, just like we would have with any kind of, um, erosion control plans or any construction maintenance we would have. It will just be ongoing and that is very typical of subdivisions.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, ju- just one other one quickly because I, I admit, I'm a little confused because I read in the staff report that they are, they are indeed recommending that we deny the exception request seeking to not have to pave the access road and the exception request, uh, to not have to put in curb and gutters and sidewalks. But the staff report is saying that they are, the staff is recommending that we accept the exception for the widening, for the narrowing of the road easement from 40 to 30. At least that's my reading of the clear language of the staff report. Now, are you saying that the latest map that you've received from the staff or the Public Works is actually requiring it be a 40-foot easement with parking on both sides rather than only one side?
Could you load the previous presentation, Jacob?
I'll go to the artistic rendering, but the previous presentation was showing the artistic rendering at the entry is 36 feet wide now with parking on both sides. Again, the staff report itself, currently, there is a lot of muddy language. It's been erased to the finish. Um, but it says we only need parking on one side. I'm not really sure where parking on both sides came up. I'm not sure where an eight-foot offset off of the property line came up. Um, but none of that, if you look at our tentative map, that's just not what we have proposed. You know, so here we are with a staff asking you to approve their plan that we've seen for 24 hours now. This is not what we've agreed to. It's frustrating. I'm not mad, uh, but I am gonna be honest. This is not what we're asking you to approve. We're asking you to look at the three exceptions and approve all of them. Um, if there are issues like paving that you have concerns, we have spoken to the fire chief. In his letters, in his referral letter here, it says a 20-foot wide road is all he needs. He is okay with the turnaround being gravel, assuming the slope is not more than 5%. Our driveway is a 2% slope. Yes, we still need Bill Reynolds to sign off on all of that, but these discussions have been happening by email. If there was a compromise to be had, I would propose that we pave the firehead turnaround. That's probably something, you know, dust is an issue or a concern. That may be a compromise. But again, to go to the extent of just adding and adding and adding hardscape and taking away from lawn, it's the opposite of what this proposal is.
Director Bronkle. Oh, sorry. I take, sorry, I just want to follow up. I can't take your point about the additional hardscape. The, the paving of the road, um, reduces the infiltration that could be allowed in a gravel road. But is it not the case, and I'm just asking, I'm not sure, is it not the case that there could be some benefit to the orderly flow of drainage to having the curb and gutters alongside the sidewalk? Could, could that not be a, a part of a drainage benefit?
You know, depending on how you look at it. I'm an LID guy. In my mind, it would flow off and it'd go into a ditch and that ditch would then transfer the material to the basin. You could certainly have a gutter. Um, again, you could certainly pave the whole lot. The, to go up six inches, to then drop down six inches right behind the curb and the sidewalk, to have it swale there, it, it just doesn't add up to me. It doesn't make a lot of sense. I'm not saying, um, anybody's right or wrong. I'm just telling you, we're looking at it as, this is a flat lot. Water's gonna flow one direction, it's gonna flow to the back of that lot. And I just think we should try to let it soak in as much as possible. It seems like the most valid concern of all the ones I, as the engineer, have heard is, is drainage. All right? The thing we don't wanna do, have a callback on us flooding. If people park in the street during Christmas holidays, that's not a concern I'm worried about. All right? These are not issues. Um, if you're putting trash in the street, everyone pulls their trash to the street. We're accommodating these concerns, but the real concern is drainage. The real thing we're getting at here is that we are at risk of compromising someone else's property, right? Aren't the exception requests so that we will not be detrimental to public welfare? Isn't that number three on the list of what we're doing this for?
Chair, I hate to interrupt, but I've, if we could just answer the questions specifically as they're asked, I'd really appreciate this because we, I feel like we're getting a second presentation, Chair.
Okay, well, I'm gonna ask a question before, that's probably a very good point, but do we have a map that shows what the applicant put in that's not the county's rendition that was put out 24 hours ago? Can you put that map up here for us to see? So that we're all talking about the same thing.
Can you go to, uh, Jacob's original presentation?
My apologies, Commissioner Mulder.
It's all right. This is just, he's gonna sit down and we're gonna get some public comment. Let's let them comment, then have our discussion afterwards.
I just had a quick question about something he, uh, he said. So the drainage area that's been developed is on two parcels, right?
It is, correct. It splits the back two parcels.
So if those parcels are sold, and I'm assuming these are all gonna be sold individually, right?
The intent of the owner is to acquire property, to be very honest, but no one can predict the future.
Okay. So if someone was to acquire one or the other of these parcels, it would be their responsibility as property owners to maintain the drainage area? Is that correct?
Uh, the maintenance would fall, I believe, on the developer for the first two years.
Right, but we're not talking about two years. We're talking about...
Sure, sure. Ultimately, it'll be a big, big hole that will be within a drainage easement. So when you buy that property, there will be the understanding on your title deed that that is a drainage easement. And I think it'll be very obvious what that hole in the ground is.
But that would be something you would require, right?
The maintenance agreement puts a requirement on all the parcels being created by the subdivision to jointly participate in the maintenance of it. So it's not just the person that owns the lot where the basin is.
So you would own the parcel with the drainage on it, but their neighbor would have to help you maintain it?
They're obligated to financially help maintain it as, as needed.
And how does that work? Do they have a pool of money that they put in every year for that or?
The Maintenance Association collects the appropriate amount of dues necessary to go ahead and maintain it. That's one of the items that Atlas Engineering will be preparing as part of the construction documents.
Is that also for the road or does the road become a county road?
It's, it's also for the road as well. So both the road and the drainage are addressed at the same maintenance document.
And if they were to put in sidewalks, then they would have to maintain those sidewalks also?
Correct.
For a point of clarification, Bob, would the three neighboring parcels be required to be a part of the road maintenance agreement?
Because... The answer is essentially no, because if, if it were made a requirement, it could be a requirement that is unfeasible for you as the, the project applicant to be able to complete. Meaning if the neighbors refuse to join, then you're, the project's now saddled with a condition that could never be satisfied. The, uh, property owners are obligated under civil code to go ahead and maintain and upkeep the road. So even if the two properties, two or three properties that are also using the, uh, the access road right now, do not want to join the Maintenance Association, they're not off the hook. The association could go ahead and through a civil action, seek, uh, participation from the, the offsite property owners.
So can you explain, if this is the map, that here's what you...
Sorry. I'll just stay at the microphone.
Yes.
But starting at the entry, right? Edgewood running, uh, you know, up and down the page to the far right. There's the on-street parking and obviously the edgewood improvements would be fully ADA, um, all around the telephone pole, there'd be a mailbox cluster, et cetera. The first 50 feet, is there any chance to zoom in on this map at all, Jacob? Um, so the first 50 feet is shown, uh, to the right would, labels that it's 50 feet paved at the very top. New paved entry, you can barely see it there. And that's the first 50 feet, that's a county requirement. Knocking the dust off the tires as you leave the, uh, intersection. So we would propose doing, the rest of it is gravel. Again, gravel roads, 20-foot wide, with an eight-foot parking space. There's five spaces on our side. There are no spaces for the other neighbors on the other side of the road. They have their own parking on their own parcels. This is an ingress and an egress easement. This is not a parking easement for the benefit of others. So there would be the gravel firehead turnaround in between the two parcels. As Jacob mentioned, we'll need to separate or move the residences a little bit to provide a little breathing room there. And then we would be gravel to the back, which is really to, a flag lot at that point. So as you turn the corner and head south, there's gravel, gravel driveways. Yes, we're proposing gravel everything. I'll be honest. Um, that is what we're going for. It seems to make the most sense. The gravel driveway works great. That all does fit within the 30-foot easement, uh, if that's what your question was.
All right. I would personally, I think that I'd like to hear from the public and then the commission. My question was the same exact thing that Peggy was gonna bring forth and ask about that down the road. So, thank you. So it's also 7:40. Why don't we take a quick break and then we will let, open it up for public comment? Then we'll bring it back and we'll have lots of time for all kinds of questions. So, uh, we'll take a five-minute break and then we'll have public comment on this issue.
Recording in progress.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. Let's get our seats and, and get going. All right, I'm gonna open up the public comment period and then I, I know there's a lot of questions from the public and from the commission. So, um, I'll open up the public to public. Those who want to speak here, line up to speak. You'll each get three minutes. And then I will close the public comment here and I will open it up for the, uh, the people that are joining us by phone or computer so that we don't have a, it mixing up. That was a request from the commission, so, um, please come up. State your name if you, if you would, please.
I'm Susie Smith. Thank you guys for, um, giving us the time and thank you for some of your explanation. I really appreciate it and made, and made me understand a bit more. But nowhere in the plans did I see any addressing of garbage pickup. And I know recology will not drive down a narrow road. I've already confirmed that in some of my stuff. But, um, you know, I did forget to include a picture on the three garbage cans that I had and it was 13 feet that three garbage cans took up. So for 10 homes, that'll be served on that road at 13 feet per home, um, it's gonna be about 130 feet worth of garbage cans placed in front of 116-foot wide parcel. Um, that's also supposed to accommodate four parked cars along the edgewood curb and not block driveways. So where are all these garbage cans gonna go? And by the way, today, recology did not pick up our garbage cans and they're still sitting there. Um, I'm also concerned about the plans that show joining the sewer lateral at the Romo, Romo's house. And as a realtor with firsthand knowledge of the difficulties of the Eureka City lateral sewer ordinance, who's going to be responsible for that sewer lateral at the, at the Romo's house that goes to, I think it's Quaker? Um, you know, the homeowners are supposed to be responsible for it and that's a really long one. The other one is, Edgewood Road is primarily built, Edgewood is primarily built with Pearson mid-century modern homes. They are extremely sought after in the real estate market. This subdivision is proposing to build homes that did not fit with the neighborhood and they're out of scale. I'm not suggesting that nothing get built. I mean, I, we need homes. But it would really be sweet if they were in sync with the surrounding homes, Pearson Stiles. These duplexes will lower the surrounding home values. There'll be a visual blight in the middle of a one-story, mid-century modern or older home neighborhood. And so my comment is, where does one person's rights end and another's begin? Um, if you don't want this next to you, if you would not want this subdivision next to you, then look in the mirror and ask yourself, what decision can you make when you wake up in the morning and look at that mirror knowing what you've put on us? Mr. Holgerson has the right to build on his property. It should be to scale. It should fit with the neighborhood. It should abide with the approved standard design codes and regulations for a subdivision that creates eight new homes, not four parcels. But the access will s- service a total of 10 homes down that road.
30 seconds.
He does not have the right to saddle the surrounding property with lowered values and be allowed exceptions to design codes and regulations that the rest of us must comply with. The surrounding homes are paying twice for his benefit. You will not be able to correct the wrongs after they're built. What is good for one is good for all and no exceptions.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Senator Marino. I sent you the last letter. This is from that. Um, this subdivision is not acceptable according to the state and local co- codes and the requirements for safety, accessibility, or mitigation of the surface water runoff. Mr. Holgerson should have made plans following the codes. And if his subdivision was too expensive, he should have either revised the plans to fit the codes that fell within his budget or made other plans for that property. The perk test that was done doesn't reflect what would happen if the surface water from the entire property that was paved or under the, um, four duplexes is diverted into this water catchment basin. And according to, um, the plans for the basin, it's neither a retention design, which would entail a much larger area with sloping sides, nor a detention basin, which demands a drain into a stream or a culvert or some other outlet that allows it to overflow into a stream. Uh, his design has no overflow proposed, so what water does not drain out before it reaches capacity would overflow into the two por- parcels north of his property. Even if you could stop the rainfall, when the catchment basin is full, you can't stop what's draining off the property into it. Um, and whatever runoff comes, it's gonna come into our land. So, um, Mr. Taylor, who calculated the runoff levels, um, suggested the floors of the duplexes be 12 inches higher than the maximum, um, property, uh, water line of the catchment. If there's no danger of flooding, why would he suggest that? And on page 179, he says that using conservative criteria, it is assumed that all runoff from the parcels to start, discharge into a single point. There's no provisions for it to get into that single point. Section 10C, all the items are marked insignificant. They should be significant because the subdivision will substantially alter the existing drainage pattern, which would potentially result in erosion on the two northern sites. It will increase the rate and amount of surface runoff and exceed the capacity of the already existing stormwater drainage. Uh, in section 21C regarding the adverse effects, it's marked less than significant. It should be significant because of the possible flooding. And also the catchment is gonna have water in it most of the time because it doesn't have a drain and it is going to attract mosquitoes. If a cup of water in your backyard can do it, so can a catchment. Please don't approve of this subdivision. Send Mr. Holgerson back to the drawing board. Suggest he follow the local county and state guidelines and requirements for his next plan. Approval of these plans will only encourage other builders to make plans disregarding the approved codes and make your jobs at the planning department... the approved codes and make your jobs at the planning department even more difficulty. And thank you for your attention to all this.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Tim Claussi. I am the owner of the property at 1854 Circle Drive. I would like to, first of all, point out some inaccuracies from Mr. Bronco about the flooding in front of my property. The photos that he took were photos from one or two days of rain, all of that runoff was from my driveway and my gutters and from Sina's or Mrs. Marino's driveway. That is just from one simple rainfall. When I bought that property in 1990, the vegetation on Mr. Holgerson's property, there was none, it was just a field. Everything from there drained onto my property through my carport and actually created some damage to the wall of my garage, some moisture damage. Since then, the vegetation has matured. It stops the drainage. If you add one approximately, what, 40% is what the estimate was of concrete on this lot, that concrete's going to drain into this, what I'm calling a pond. And that's fine, but what if it overflows? It's going to overflow right onto the patio behind my house, it's been there for 40 years, about 40 years, and then through my garage and carport. The interesting thing to me about this particular hearing is that Mr. Holgerson's representatives, Mr. Bronco and Mr. Taylor, were given the opportunity to speak extensively for half-an-hour, 45 minutes each, with slides and photographs, but those of us who live there get three minutes. Beyond that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have comments and 15 copies, do I submit those to the clerk?
So this is your last hurrah, Mr. Ford, good luck. My name is Ellen Dowling and I live directly across the street from the proposed project, and I am not in agreement with the recommended findings from the planning department. I strongly urge you to find an alternative to the submitted application and clarify the following concerns that I have. Also, we are not, I am not opposed to having mixed use in the neighborhood, I welcome it, not at this scale. The present proposed plan is for a total of nine dwelling units, it's four duplexes, eight units, three-bedroom, two are three-bedroom and two are two-bedroom. So no one's talked about the occupancy. This is a population increase of a minimum of 16 to a maximum of up to 40 people. So on your negative declaration, how you could not call that a significant impact or a change to the existing conditions of this neighborhood is questionable. Also, I refer you to executive summary, page three, the report, paragraph three. The staff reports reference the Senate Bill 9. Why is that in the staff report? This is not, to my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, this is not a Senate Bill 9 application. So why is it referenced? And the second question, where is county council, are they here? No county council?
Yes.
Thank you, all right. My question is, in the last sentence of that paragraph, the staff indicates that the state law mandates the county approve duplexes if they approve this parcel division. Where does that come from? Why is that not cited? What laws mandates that? I want to know, as a public member who's going to be impacted by that. The existing parcel referred to with the remainder is referred as a parcel. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. It is not a parcel, one parcel. I looked at the deed, it's two parcels, and on the tentative map, it doesn't show the boundaries, which is one parcel and which is parcel number two. And then there's parcel 1, 2, 3, 4. So as a person who would like to understand this project and make it happen on a reduced scale, it would be good to have that information. And then, oh gosh, 20 seconds, is there a parallel effort for zone reclassification ongoing that we are not aware of? And I refer to page 10, number 5, staff report under findings, saying that the development is consistent with the purpose of existing residential, blah, 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 or when processed in conjunction with a zone reclassification, is consistent with the purposes of the proposed zone. Is that happening? And so, number 11, I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time.
I know it's hard to get everything in in three minutes, but I have to be consistent.
Please, the project is welcomed, not at this scale. Reduce it to two duplexes, he could do the adopted standards.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Kim Fattler and I live to the west of the proposed subdivision. I share the 340-foot boundary. My request is that all four monuments be located and established prior to any groundwork taking place. Atlas Engineer has been using GIS and my fence line for all of these submissions, and I know that this is not accurate, as there was a surveyor out that Mr. Holgerson had a few years ago that told us that the fence was over in multiple places, and for some reason, that was never filed. That survey was never filed with the county, and when we're talking about a five-foot offset and putting a swell right up against my entire fence line, that could make a huge difference. A five-foot offset, and that surveyor mentioned there was places where the fence is off by five feet. So using GIS and specifically my fence line, I attempted to hire my own surveyor recently. He told me he could meet me and that it would take about three days, he'd check with the county, he never called me back, I returned several calls, not answered, I finally talked to him the other day, he said, he spoke with Atlas, it's a small town, they all work together, and he was told, there's not really anything to go off, blah, 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 and that they'd be using the fence as the boundary. There's three recent new subdivision monuments around us that he could be using, plus that previous survey that was done that was never filed. He said it was going, the fence line was going to be problematic, I'm not sure what that meant, and he understood why I'd be nervous. I was not nervous, now I'm nervous, why would I be nervous? So I would like to see those established before the work is done on the ground and before that digging is done, because that could make a difference. I'm the one with the 60-foot tall trees, 60-year-old cypress that are 50 feet tall, and there's going to be a five-foot offset and those buildings are going to be directly into my trees. That's my main concern. And then moving along to the fire road access, I can guarantee you, a 10-foot fire truck is not going to fit down a 12-foot road. It doesn't take an engineer, I'm a retired firefighter, to tell you, you can't get out of the truck on a 12-foot road. So California State Fire Code tells you, it has to be 20 feet wide and obstructed. You can't operate off the truck, you can't get out of the truck at 12 feet, so I'm not sure why you want it to be 12 feet. That, as a landlord, you have multi-tenant housing, all that stuff you showed, that is old, privately owned, you have a responsibility to care for your tenants, that's why you have to have a paved access for a fire truck. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Joan Romo and we live down at the end of the easement, the 30-foot easement, that has been serving three families for the last 45 years. Mr. Holgerson is asking for several code exceptions in order to complete his project. However, the added costs of complying with Humboldt County codes, paved streets, 50-foot wide widths, sidewalks, curbs, and gutters are not valid reasons for asking for exceptions. Mr. Taylor, the principal leader at Atlas, in the staff report on page 52, said the added cost of paving is significant and could make the development of the minor subdivision infeasible. On page 66, he said, "Any increase in the right-of-way that is larger than the existing 30-foot access utility easement would only further reduce the usable land of the applicant and hinder development of the minor subdivision. Increasing the right-of-way to 50 feet would reduce the lot size of the front three parcels by almost 20%." He also said, "There is also a concern regarding costs for the necessary relocation of an existing utility pole along Edgewood Road if a 50-foot right-of-way is required." On page 67, he said, "The added cost of the sidewalk, curb, and gutter are significant and could make the development of the minor subdivision infeasible." The staff report of the findings on page 11.7 said, "An exception for a reduced right-of-way width of 30 feet is necessary to accommodate the proposed housing development and would not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property in the area. Road paving, installation of sidewalks, curb, and gutters are necessary to protect the public welfare and to protect improvements in the vicinity." If sidewalks are necessary to protect the public welfare and going to be required with a 30-foot easement, then allowing eight feet of parallel parking plus sidewalks will reduce the 30-foot easement down to 12 feet of traffic lane. According to the County of Humboldt Department of Public Works, page 247, for the minor subdivision level low density, the right-of-way road says 50 feet. There are still too many concerns to the Humboldt County codes that need to be addressed and corrected before this permit is permitted. No road turnarounds at parcel one, which is the termination parcel, no designated onsite parking, site friction impacts on the 30-foot easement, opening and closing of doors, no updated graphic that shows the required sidewalks on the staff alternative tentative map, no 20-foot minimum fire lane width that does not have parked cars on it, no description of ADA sidewalks from parcel one to Edgewood Road, which is over 260 feet, no evidence of ADA parking, no parking should be allowed on a category two road because it is classified as a narrow, single-lane width turnout, and therefore there is no parking, zero shoulder, 10 to 12 feet width, which is way too small for the emergency vehicles. The Neil Holstrom Minor Subdivision Project needs to be denied based on the premises that it does not have adequate funding to bring this project up to Humboldt County codes, so as tenants and the neighbor's safety and welfare will not be compromised. Thank you.
Thank you.
My husband Ted would like, has something he would like to share also?
You can speak at that lower microphone, sir.
Talk for me, okay?
Okay. Can you? And I'll allow that in this circumstance, if she wants to speak for you, go ahead, you can speak.
I typed it up as he said it tonight.
That's fine, that's fine. I know this is not the usual, but I'm going to allow it. I've known Ted for a long time.
Thank you, excuse me. So this is what, good evening. Tonight's meeting is about equality. The homeowners at the end of the easement have just as many happiness rights and needs to use their property as Mr. Holgerson does. We have the right to ingress egress in order to access our properties. We also have the right to fire protection. Since our home is not protected by fire sprinklers, we maybe have more needs to fast and accessible fire protection. We have more need than Mr. Holgerson does because of the fact that some of us are disabled. The county code says we have to have at least a fire hydrant somewhere nearby within 500 feet, which is not accessible at this particular moment. Mr. Holgerson should be required to put in a fire hydrant for everybody's safety. Fire has no idea about waiting for someone to come to it. If the fire is here, then everybody needs fast and speedy protection and not slowed down by cars that have parked on an easement that is already smaller than code requires. Any 20-foot easement should have no parking signs on it, according to fire code. It is not my problem Mr. Holgerson does not have adequate funding to complete this project to code. He is diminishing our rights for health and safety, and as homeowners, he is lowering our house values. As far as I can see, codes are designed to help everybody equally here in Humboldt County in order to maintain their public safety and well-being. And we have, we've had, when we bought the property, there were two houses on a 30-foot easement. We bought the property, there are now three dwellings on the 30-foot easement houses, families. There are now going to be 11 families coming down the same 30-foot easement with parking on the side of it. That's our concern, it is not meeting code, and it's like, so we who live there are going to be suffering for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, he wanted to add one more comment, he wanted, his last parting things are dealing with equality. Two wrongs don't make a right. Bass Lane is the house behind us, and there are only two families going down a 20-foot easement. There are not 11 families going down a 30-foot easement. So that's Bass Lane, you need to look at Isaac Court. Isaac Court is a 40-foot wide, has a big fire turnaround, and they have 13 families on Isaac Court, and that subdivision was done correctly. And there's another one behind us that has another one that is the same way. You look at the subdivisions that are put in our neighborhood that have been done correctly with easements, fire turnarounds, and safety issues. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this item? All right, I'm going to close the public here in the chambers, and I'm going to ask, is there anybody on the Zoom that wishes to speak on this item? I'm seeing no hands, but I'm just going to ask one time. All right, seeing no hands, I will now close the public comment and bring it back to the commission and staff. Would staff like to address any of those? And yeah, and I would, well, that's part of staff, so, and I also would counsel like to answer the one question that was asked regarding that, so.
I'll take a shot at it while Destiny is looking at that. We can, she can amplify anything that I say. So the comment was made, it's not an SB9 subdivision. What we're trying to point out here is that once the lots are created, SB9 provisions will apply, so that duplexes can be approved. This is part of the state's and really county's desire to see more housing provided. And so what we do want the commission to be acutely aware of is that in reviewing the subdivision, and these are not really small lots, they're fairly large lots, they can accommodate duplexes, but it's likely that this will be duplex development, and those can be approved. I think the other thing, there is no rezone approved, I think that was standard language, unfortunately, that probably got left in there from the code in terms of a finding, and so I apologize for the confusion on that. In terms of the fact that there's two parcels, there, I don't believe there are two parcels, this is a very confusing legal description. The parcel one appears to describe the subject parcel, and parcel two actually appears to describe the neighbor's parcel. And so I don't know why there are two parcels there shown in that deed.
Good evening, I'd just like to echo what Director Ford said, you do not have to apply to be an SB9 project. Once a subdivision is created, if they apply to, or if they do certain projects, SB9 automatically kicks in. So when it's asking, once lots are created, what state law mandates? State law would be the SB9 regulations, that's specifically what they're referencing in the government codes and in the code of regulations, that SB9.
No, I'm not going to open back up the public. All right, I'm not going to, if I open that can of worms up, then everybody wants to have a second question, but thank you, I'm sorry about that. Anything else, Director? One that I had that was a question that was asked, is there any kind of design review or anything in this area? Because of keeping the character, I didn't think there was either.
Right.
All right. Go ahead, Bob.
A question was raised about a fence line along the westerly side of the property that does not appear to necessarily be on the property line. I did speak with that neighbor earlier today, and I did forward an email over to the applicant and the applicant's design team to make them aware that there could be an issue that there could be an issue with the property line and the fence not necessarily being on the same line. There is a civil code that does address fences, and that's Civil Code 841, and that puts the obligation on both property owners to maintain and keep their fences between the properties. So, as that project gets developed, the fence will get corrected, moved to the correct location. So there won't be a problem with the fence encroaching on one side or the other. The lots are significant size where developability of the lots will not come into play with the fence being out of position with where the property line is. The second item I'd like to address is in regards to the fire hydrant. There's a high likelihood that Humboldt Bay Fire will be requiring a fire hydrant to be installed on Edgewood near the driveway serving these properties in order to go ahead and provide the adequate spacing between fire hydrants that's necessary. That's something that's a design detail that's flushed out when the applicant prepares the improvement plans and submits it to Humboldt Bay Fire for approval. So that'll be addressed at that particular point in time. Those are the two issues I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
All right. I think that, go ahead, Mike, and then Brian had his hand up for a long time, so.
Let Brian go.
Okay, Brian, go ahead, and then Mike, you follow him.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mike. I just wanted to ask, you know, a math question. Is it possible to be able to add a sidewalk in one direction without expanding the 30-foot right-of-way? Either by subtracting parking or some other option? Thank you.
Do you want to take that, Bob?
If parking is eliminated along the frontage of the lots in the subdivision, then a sidewalk would fit well within that 30-foot easement. That would give 20 feet for access as required by the fire code, plus five feet for the sidewalk, and that would leave in excess of five feet if the project were approved with that sort of a cross-section for the road.
Thank you.
All right. Mike, you had your hand up, then Thomas.
Yeah, my question is for staff about the fire turnaround and the width on how it is there. I'm still not understanding exactly if we were to go with a reduced roadway in there, what, how that would work with Humboldt Bay Fire and access in there, because that is some concerns of the residents of the area as well as then it would be the new homeowners or tenants in this case there.
If the exception request for a reduced right-of-way as well as a reduced roadway, that would at least be a minimum of 20 feet for fire access, it does fit within the 30-foot easement. However, when you get to the turnaround, an additional right-of-way will be needed to accommodate the turnaround because that does extend outside the normal easement. And that's very similar to one of the other subdivisions that speakers were talking about tonight, which is Isaac Court, where you have a narrow right-of-way going into the subdivision, and then there's a cul-de-sac bulb at the end. So obviously, the right-of-way has to expand for the turnaround. And that's the same thing that would occur with this project. Throughout the straightaway part, it would be 30 feet wide if the exception request is approved. And then in addition to it, where the turnaround is, there would be an additional right-of-way to accommodate that turnaround.
And is that where there is no parking? Can we bring up one, the tentative map there? So where exactly is that turnaround or the fire easement to get in there, so?
So if you see a heavy dash line near where the little hand is moving around, that T-shaped heavy dash line represents the area needed by the fire truck to go ahead and turn around. And it's 20 feet in width, and then it has a radius on it that's either 40 feet or 50 feet. I can't remember the number off the top of my head. So when you look at the, the map that's shown there, you could see that there's, what the applicant's proposing in this diagram is a 20-foot-wide ingress egress route, and then adjacent to it is an eight-foot-wide area for parking, which is where you see the five triangles at. So, in this particular picture, you're seeing a gravel road that's 28 feet in width. And then when you get to the turnaround area, it's going to expand and kind of head between the two homes on those parcels.
This is a question for Public Works. What was the rationale behind adding all of, all of the pavement?
In an urban setting, gravel roads tend to go ahead and create dust and disturbance for all the properties that are surrounding it. Public Works utilizes the premise that in areas where the lots are being subdivided into lot sizes that are smaller than one acre, those are the areas that are most impacted by dust because the houses are very close to the road. In larger rural subdivisions, one-plus acres, the five-acre ranchettes, the gravel roads tend to be adequate because the dust is contained nearer the road, and the houses are typically farther away.
Go ahead, Thomas.
So first, I got a comment. This reminds me of that Planning Commission conference where they did the presentation on "We Need Housing." Everyone says "We need housing," and no one can agree on what that is. So it makes me even more sad we're losing the director. But my actual question, the 30-foot easement, this is through the chair to staff. 30-foot easement that already exists to three parcels, I believe it is, will, has staff looked at their easement to, if that easement can be impacted by parking being utilized there? Because I know some properties, there can't be any impaction upon the width of the easement, such as parking or structures or anything like that. So has that easement been looked at before we look at using parking within the easement that already exists for other property owners?
I'd recommend that we defer to council for an opinion on the rights of a particular easement.
Do we have the language on the easement?
And I apologize for that question. It just, it came up with the last public speaker, just some stuff that was said, and I was like, oh, wow.
The title report references two ingress and egress easements. I do not have a copy of the easement deeds in the file.
All right. Noah, you've been patient there. If you're, if you're done answering his question, I thought.
I guess the thing that I would say is, before asking county council to opine on something, she should be given the opportunity to see what it says.
Yeah, I agree with that. So, I think that's, it'll probably, in the process of going through the subdivision, it'll, that'll... Okay, Noah?
With respect to private road easements, the one thing I can say is that when the easements are established for a subdivision, for ingress and egress to all the different lots in it, parking is allowed on the streets with those easements. It's not, a typical ingress and egress easement does allow for the parking of vehicles along it. It's a very common occurrence in the county for non-county maintained roads.
Okay. All right. Noah, go ahead, and then I'm going to follow Noah.
Well, Alan, are you sure? Because I think you had your hand up before I raised mine.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. My first question for staff, I'm not sure if this is for you, John, or for Bob, but the whole LID issue, if I understood it right, the water had to be detained on each individual lot. So, one of my thoughts is, there's really two issues on this whole subdivision for me, and one is, is the drainage, and the other one is the parking, okay? And you've got very large, oversized lots. So, it seems to me it would be much easier to detain the water on each lot. I've did it on multiple projects. And you could still have that, a smaller, maybe, catch-all at the back of the, the lots that are, you know, backed up to the Circle Drive. But if I understand the LID regulations, that's the way it's supposed to be. That it's, I, I guess you could make the argument that if you're sending them all and everybody's in a green, in a homeowners association, that it could go to one location. But it would seem to me that if you detained it on each lot, it'd be a lot easier to retain that water on, on the parcel than just at one edge of it, okay? So you'd be dispersing it all across the property instead of at the, and I'll let you guys answer that, and then I have some other thoughts.
With respect to LID and its requirements to go ahead and create self-draining areas on the property, typically those sorts of areas don't have any sort of maintenance covenant that goes along with it. The design storm that those are designed to is much less than what the retention basin for the project is. So therefore, having a stormwater retention basin that's designed for storm flows to properly protect the downstream properties is more robust than what LID would be required for an individual lot. So even though this property is providing the retention basin at the north side of the property, they're still going to have to have additional self-draining areas at the time that the lots are developed in order to go ahead and comply with LID, which will provide yet another buffer to help prevent flooding on the downstream property owners. The applicant could go ahead, as part of the design, to set individual retention basins on each property instead of having one larger one spread across two properties at the south end. That's a design decision that the developer can decide upon once their project's approved and once they start finalizing what their project's going to be. It's not something that has to be settled on at the time of the tentative map. There is a certain amount of flexibility that goes in with the project that allows them to best design the project to adequately provide protection of the downstream properties.
As a follow-up to that, I'd highly, having, being somebody who has done multiple subdivisions, I'd highly recommend to the developer to do that because homeowners associations are a flawed philosophy. They, they just don't work very well. The best ones don't work very well. So if you have, if you're dealing with that on each individual lot, that landowner is going to have to deal with that issue as opposed to all those landowners having to get together and deal with it on two people's lots at the end of the subdivision. So I would highly recommend that you went that route. That's just a suggestion. My second question is related to the parking. I could have no problem with the reduced ingress and egress easement if we change the parking on this subdivision. The stacked parking, if you brought up any one of those maps where we show the cars stacked behind each other, do not work. I can tell you this because I did four major subdivisions and three minor subdivisions. And I can tell you that 75% of the people, by looking at them after they're done, don't use their garage at all. So you can just throw that one out, and the rest of them are parked in the driveway. So that means two of those cars that you show being in the garage are, got to go somewhere out on the street. And that's just a fact. I can take you out and drive you to multiple subdivisions and show you that happening. So, the fact that we go back to that these are oversized lots, I would make the suggestion that you reduce the road coming in, but you get the, the parking off on these lots. That could be by moving the houses back on the lots. It could be, and I agree that the less impervious surface is good. So those extra parking spaces could be non-impervious surfaces. They could be rock. They could be pavers. They could be whatever the developer wants to use. And I think it should be his choice as, as long as, you know, the, the Public Works would, would sign off on it, agree with whatever that, that is. But you could get the, you have the space. You can get the cars off the road. You don't have to have sidewalks because if you get the cars off the road, the people can walk right down the road because there's no cars parked to weave in and out of, okay? So you could eliminate that on a small development like this. This is infill. We don't have to do everything. Been trying to get away from this for years. Just everything is one-size-fits-all. We always got to put a sidewalk. We always got to do everything. I know you have concerns as a neighborhood. I think that there is, there is a real potential with this piece of property to do a really good development, and it's thinking outside the box a little bit. I'd hope the developer was willing to do that. I'd hope the commission was willing to look at those options. The, the parking, the way it is, is, is an archaic design that we've been using for years. And hey, I'll be the first one to say, I've, I've used that design to get through the process and appease Public Works and, and go and build subdivisions in town, so. But it doesn't work. I can tell you it doesn't work. You know, you don't have to believe me, but you can go look for yourself. So, with just some small changes that probably would be cheaper to the developer and better for the neighborhood, I think this project could move forward, and I think that both sides would get what they're after. So, those are my thoughts. I don't know, Brian has his hand up, and I don't know if that is just up from before or if he put it back up, and then Noah just put his. So go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to say I agree with almost everything that you just said. I think I have a philosophical or fundamental disagreement about putting in this many units without a sidewalk. I know your argument is that it's superfluous. However, by taking out the cars, it definitely makes it safer. So either way would be better. I agree with the larger-sized lots being able to accommodate the parking. And if I were to make a motion, it would be exactly what you said, but having a multimodal, some sort of path for non-motorized folks to travel on. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd make one comment back to that. Remember, the driveway or the, the easement coming down is only 260 feet long. You know, it'd be one thing if it was a long street going through connecting to something, but this is basically creating flag lots off of Edgewood. So, you got to look at the whole picture, you know? It's not one-size-fits-all like we, we plan. I, I just see potential to, to, to do this, and it'd be better for everybody. I shouldn't have commented back to that, Brian, but it's only 260 feet. That was my point. Noah, you, you were next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, well, I'm also of, of two minds about what I prefer here. But before we get to whether we agree with it or, or not, I'm still trying to get clear on exactly what the staff and/or Public Works...
public works is recommending on a couple of points. So let me just read a couple of sections of the staff report briefly. The tentative map was updated on May 20th, 2022. This is the map that the applicant updated to include a fire truck turnaround area between parcel number three and number four per concerns from the public and Humboldt Bay Fire Protection District. However, this turnaround, as shown on this revised map, is not consistent with required yard setbacks in the RS zone. So, just stopping there, is that map that's being referred to by that language the same map that Mr. Bronkle just showed us where he showed the T area that would be used as a turnaround for fire truck? Because he seemed to be saying it like that's an adequate turnaround for the fire truck, but the staff report is saying that that map is not following the required yard setbacks. Could I get clarification on that one? And then I have one other one.
Go ahead.
The applicant's tentative map is showing houses that are set too close to where the turnaround is. The houses would just need to be moved a little bit to the west in order to go ahead and have the adequate setback necessary. So, on the image, you could see that the fire lane turnaround is touching right next to the sides of the proposed structures. If you simply shift those structures to the west, which would be downwards on the screen, it would provide an adequate setback. Because the lots were substantially large, it was my assumption that houses would be moved accordingly to fit within whatever the setbacks would be for the project. There's adequate room, even as Alan's mentioning, to accommodate parking in other ways on these lots. It does create a lot of flexibility for the developer to think about how they're situating the houses and how parking might be provided on-site.
Okay. So obviously, we're not deciding or approving the exact specific location of the houses. We're talking about approving the lot lines and the paved and the shared roadways. But what you're saying is that the roadway, as shown on that map, and that T struck, that T area, would be adequate for fire access and turnaround, correct?
That is correct. You should consider the structures for visualization purposes of what it might look like if those structures are there. The applicant may have a different design for the houses. They're just there to demonstrate how a house would fit on the property.
Okay. And then, going back to really my very first question earlier in this long discussion, I just want to read an earlier line. "The Department of Public Works Land Use Division and the Planning and Building Department recommend the approval of the reduced access road width of 30 feet and do not recommend approval of the other exception requests." It goes on to explain why you don't recommend approval of the other exception requests, which have to do with paving and curbs and gutters. But the first part of that says they recommend approval of the reduced access road to 30 feet. Is that, or is that not the case?
When public works first conditioned the project, it conditioned it with a 20-foot-wide paved road with sidewalk adjacent to it that all fit within the 30-foot-wide easement.
Okay.
Since that time, fire has indicated that the road needs to be wider. That's where the confusion's coming in, is that when public works initially indicated support for approval of a 30-foot-wide right-of-way, it was based upon a much narrower road fitting within it.
Okay.
Now, if you guys... If the commission approves the project with a narrower road section, then the exception request for the reduced right-of-way fits right in with it. It's an existing 30-foot-wide easement through there, and having an overlapping 30-foot-wide easement for these lots fits perfectly within it based upon what the subdivider's proposing with their tentative map.
But, if I'm understanding you, we cannot have sidewalks and parking along one side of the access road and adequate fire access within the 30-foot-wide easement? Is that correct or not correct?
You need 20 feet for the fire lane. You need eight foot for a parking lane. You need five feet for a sidewalk. So that's 28 plus five, that's 33 feet. You've exceeded 30 feet at that point.
So conceivably, it doesn't have to be the full 40, but maybe it could be 33 if we wanted to get all those things? Because I, you know, I tend to lean towards wanting to have the curbs and gutters and sidewalks, and certainly want to have parking along, you know, at least one side of this access lane. And obviously, we need to have 20 feet for the fire. But if that adds up to 33 feet, conceivably, we could not grant the exact exception request, but a just slightly bigger easement to 33 feet that could accommodate all of those things?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. I feel like I've finally got my head around that issue. Thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Mike. I have a thought after.
Regarding those, that interchange right there with the fire access, and I'm looking at Kenton Bill Reynolds' email to Jacob Dunn on May 10th, which is page 69 of our packet here. And it's saying that if there has to be, per fire code, each residence in this subdivision will be within 500 feet of a fire hydrant. And if it is, then 20-foot width is acceptable. Otherwise, it would need to be 26 feet wide if the fire hydrant has to be moved more towards or on that access road. Do we know anything about that at this point?
The fire hydrants are greater than 500 feet to the end of the access road. It's most likely that the fire department will require a fire hydrant along Edgewood, probably in front of the subject property, to be able to provide service for the unnamed access road.
And not along the access road?
It's been my experience that fire hydrants are not put at the end of roads.
Not at the end, but...
They're put near the start of a road so they could connect their hoses. They can drive down the road, and the hose starts falling out of the truck. And then when they're at the end of the road, they could begin fighting the fire.
I understand that. I'm talking about within 500 feet. So, it will not... The fire hydrant will still be 500 feet away from a residence, the very back residences, if it's put on Edgewood, right there at the access road.
Be about 260 feet away.
Okay.
Okay. So, go ahead, Peggy.
I don't like the idea that we're just pointing out the worst subdivisions that we could find in the neighborhood and saying, "See, we're just as good as them." You know, you get potentially 15 cars going now up and down this road if you add these additional units plus the three that are there. And if everybody has two cars, you're probably talking about 15 cars going up and down a gravel road. And I understand the gravel road, you know, is more permeable for drainage and all that, but I think it needs to be paved. I think there needs to be sidewalks. And if you can't afford to do that, you shouldn't be doing the subdivision because you're adding a lot more traffic. I've worked in communities where they only have gravel and everyone wants a paved road. It does... It's going to add more cost, but that's the cost that you have to incur if you're going to have a subdivision. I'm not interested in no, you know, let's just minimize everything because look at what they did down the road, you know? I thought we were trying to do better than that. And we're doing a subdivision in Arcata. They're not letting us get away with just putting a gravel road. We had to pave the gravel road. We had to put in the sidewalks and bike lanes and all of those things. And it's not cheap, you know? It was like one and a half million dollars to do it, but that's what we had to do. I... That's my opinion, you know? If you're going to add more impact to the community, then you need to absorb that cost.
Go ahead, Thomas.
So, as far as the access, and just looking at this map again, the idea of the gravel driveway with the turns, how they're going to get into these back two lots, I do not support the ask-to-go gravel driveway. I don't support it one bit. I don't see the maintenance that takes place in gravel roads. If you look at a lot of roadways that were placed in decades ago within Humboldt County, the ones that got asphalt versus the ones that are gravelled are in better shape even though they have potholes. So that's my personal opinion. I would support an idea of gravel parking spots, and I support the idea of moving more parking spots onto the different lots and not onto the street.
With that, I'd like to... I don't usually open this back up to the applicant, and that's the only person I'm allowed to come back up and talk. But I think you got kind of a raw deal tonight because you got... The ball was changed 24 hours ago, if that's what happened. It appears that's what happened. And we're looking at options that aren't what you were proposing, but some suggestions have been thrown out there. And I will let you address that if you want to, you know, go with what your subdivision is, go with what the county is proposing to be your subdivision, or do you want to take it back and possibly look at rethinking this thing and coming back to us? So...
No, my thoughts were the same as yours. Like, I was thinking maybe we paved 26 feet, and then we put all the parking off the easement onto the lots with gravel, and then I think that's a win-win for everybody. I had the same thoughts today. I was just telling Mike that.
I just was trying to throw an idea out there.
Yeah, and I mean, I think even on the west side or the east side, we can have a designated walk zone if that needs to be for safety. But I think sidewalk, curb, and gutter is extreme for this project.
I happen to agree with that. But I'm not against sidewalk and curb and gutter when it works in the right settings.
And as my engineer pointed out, if the water filters through the ground to the basin, it's better for the water and the basin.
Much better. I mean, that's the whole idea. It used to be they made us pipe everything to the curb, and then it had to go someplace. Now it's the total opposite. It's to keep it on the sites. And that works in flat places like this. It doesn't when you're on hillsides because you load the hillside up. But that's a whole nother story. That's not this project. So, what would you like to do as an applicant?
I would like to get approval. So, and I will say approval with 26 feet paved and offside gravel park... or onside gravel parking.
Okay. You've heard... Go ahead, Director. I can tell you're...
And 26 feet would cover if the fire truck needs 26.
I was just going to say, we could probably develop a condition that would address that if that would be the commission's desire.
Okay.
I am also in agreement.
I also agreed with the comment you made because I was thinking the same thing about having... There is space to have some sort of basin, or it could be smaller on multiple lots as they're moving down. So then your less is going into the lot space.
And that's definitely something to look into, too.
It's like a French drain kind of situation.
I would make the suggestion you don't do any basins. You don't have anything that has to be maintained. You put that storage underneath driveways. You put that storage underneath walkways, underneath landscape areas, okay? Don't create something that you have to maintain. Create something that goes... Once it's put in there, it's done, okay? You're not going to have to go mow it. You're not going to go have to dig it out in five years. But that isn't what's going to happen because more than likely, you're going to sell these places. I'm not... Maybe you're going to keep them all. That's your choice what to do. If it's just one owner, it works.
Right.
When there's five owners on that or on that proper or down that road, and they have to get together to go clean that ditch out, it doesn't work. I can tell you that because I've lived it. I would never do another private subdivision. I'll never do another subdivision, I'll be honest, okay? But I would never do another private one because it is... I can't tell you how many phone calls I get. "What do we do now?" You know, it's like, that's your problem now, you know?
I hear you.
But it just is not... It's a way to make things that don't work, developable, I guess, because the county won't take anything in, and that's a whole nother problem. But that's a choice that the county has made, and so it falls on the developers to come up with the solutions, you know? So, yes, Rob.
If the commission is looking at approving the project with the unnamed access road being paved 26 feet wide with no curb, gutter, sidewalk, amenities to it, if the commission articulates that in the motion, this is no different than any other project where the commission kind of tweaks an item a little bit. Public Works will revise our conditions of approval to make a note that it was amended by the planning commission at today's meeting. So I don't see the need that we would need to come back with anything else for it. It's something public works deals with administratively based upon a clear condition that your commission might approve tonight.
That would certainly work for me. Does that work for you, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Does that work for the commission? Is that where we're wanting to leap ahead towards?
I... Yeah, I would be happy with that. I'd like to hear from the director if that would be feasible or not. And I really appreciate the suggestion of the permeable off-road parking.
I think that's fine. I think the thing that we just would want to do is make sure we all understood what the condition would say. And it sounds like it's a 26-foot paved section?
Correct.
No curb, gutter, sidewalk?
Correct.
And I think that's fine. And then, I think the thing that we need to do is to add a condition to the coastal development permit that there will be gravel parking provided on the parcels and not within the unnamed street.
I'd suggest that you don't necessarily say gravel, but a impervial surface that public works and developer can agree on.
Sure.
So that the options are out there. There's a lot of different ways that it could go. So, go ahead.
I still have another question.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Brian, and then Mike. Sorry, Mike.
I just wanted to clarify with the 26-foot road width. The developer mentioned that if we wanted there to be some sort of non-vehicular path that he would do one, and I'm just wondering if that fits in the 26 feet or not? And where would that go if we were to ask for that?
I believe the 26 feet includes that pedestrian area on it because the fire code only needs 20 feet, which leaves six foot left for...
And the reality is, is if you're not parking cars on the street, you've really got a 20-foot-wide pedestrian area at any time except for when a car's backing out onto it. So, it's... Yeah, it would be nice to have sidewalks there, but on 168-foot driveway is what this really is, it doesn't call for all that. It doesn't need all that. It's not a thoroughfare through to another street, you know? It's dead end.
Alan, can I give you my personal experience as someone who's lived in one of these? I know you've spoken a lot as someone who's built one. But I just paced 68 feet is a shared driveway for my four houses that share a common driveway. There are 11 children who live on it. Four of them are mine. And in the morning time, when the kids are going to get the bus from all four houses, is the same time that people are backing out to get to work. And if it weren't for very cautious, you know, neighbors and a sense of community, there would be problems. So, I respect what you're saying as a builder, but as someone who's lived in a shared, you know, cramped area, I feel like it is necessary, especially given the proximity with the school and not knowing where the school bus stops are. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Go ahead, Mike. You've been waiting.
Okay. So, with that, the turnaround is going to be paved as well? Is that correct?
Right. I think it should. It should be.
That was my understanding, besides the street.
Yes.
Okay. And then, the drainage issue here, the satisfaction, you know, problems associated to the satisfaction of the department, does that include then this perk test more and making sure that this swall is working and all of that before things progress too bad?
So the next... Assuming the commission approves the project, the next step for the applicant is to prepare a complete... the applicant is to prepare a complete drainage report for the property and designing all the drainage features for it to make sure that everything is gonna go ahead and function well. That's the first step. So once Public Works approves that, then the developer can begin construction. If during the course of construction, we encounter other drainage issues that come up, it's brought up to the developer's attention, and then a plan to address whatever may be discovered during construction is resolved, and we take care of it at that point.
Does that take into account any of the neighbors with anything on that or not?
The best strategy for the community is really for the Circle Drive neighbors to meet with the subdivider to discuss what their concerns are and to see if there's a way to come do a consensus on a way to better improve the drainage once it leaves the Holgerson property and begins working its way to Circle Drive. But it takes all the parties to come together with a desire to make the drainage better to, for that really to come into effect.
So, we've spent a lot of time on this one. Where do we want to go with it?
I'm prepared to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, if there's no one else to speak.
Melanie would like to make a comment.
I don't think we can specify that the drainage should be in each individual lot. The drainage, we can't really specify anything in regards to the drainage. Is that, is that true?
The commission could require that individual detention basins be built on each lot. However, I'd recommend that you leave that flexibility to the developer to figure out what works best for them. That's, that's something that really needs to rest with the subdivider.
Okay, thank you.
I don't understand that, because if that drainage issue impacts your neighbors, why do you get to decide what it's gonna be?
Well, I'll let Bob answer that, but I could answer that one easy.
Sure.
Looking at the way we're potentially approving this project, there still has to be a hydrology, some sort of hydrology study and stuff like that and all kinds of calculations. So I think it'd be, it would be wrong of us to say drainages need to be here, here, and here without all those percolation rate tests and flow rates and elevations and all that accounted for, which is what professionals do.
Right.
So I, I'm in full support of the flexibility.
That's what the engineer's job is and the develop, right. And the developer should have that discussion with him. I was just making a suggestion about that. You may not agree with that. I just think that it's a better way to go, having done it both ways. I believe that when you don't have to deal with that down the road because it's on each one and it's just below ground, it's a much better way to go. That's all I was saying. They can decide, as long as they, if the engineer designs it so that it doesn't affect the neighbors, it's up to them to decide how it's.
Yeah, I guess I misunderstood, because I thought they already had done that. They've already done these perk tests. They've already put a basin there, and they've already made their recommendation. So now you're saying that's not what they're really gonna do?
The applicant has demonstrated at a preliminary level that everything is feasible. Everything hasn't been fully engineered out for what will ultimately be built. They've demonstrated feasibility, which is what's necessary.
So if the engineer fails in their designs, then the neighbors have the right to take some sort of legal action against the engineer?
That's always the case. If an engineer fails to design adequately, there's always an option for civil matter against the engineer.
All right. So, Brian, your hand's back up, I think.
It is, and I'm prepared to make a motion, if I may.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I would find that there are no substantial evidence that the project will have a significant adverse impact on the environment. Adopt the mitigated negative declaration prepared per CEQA guidelines, Section 15074, and adopt the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program per CEQA guidelines, Section 15097. Make the required findings for approval of the minor subdivision and coastal development permit, and approve the minor subdivision and coastal development permit as recommended by staff and subject to the recommended conditions with a couple of minor changes. The first one is to approve the road width down to what we discussed of 26 feet, including travel lanes in two directions and a sidewalk. To approve the other requests for flexibility as recommended by staff, and to remove any requirement that there be a shared percolation area and allow the flexibility for them to explore individual lot, as well as to move the parking off of the easement and allow impermeable surfaces for onsite parking for each of the lots.
Director, you get.
If I could clarify the motion, Commissioner Mitchell?
Please help me.
So the 26-foot paved road section, I believe, is correct. What was discussed was not with a sidewalk unless you're intending to modify the previous discussion. So are you adding in a sidewalk to that? Is that what the motion is?
Well, Director Bronco, when I asked if the 26 would allow for one, he said it would.
I said allows for a walking area on the road. Because 20 foot's needed for the fire lane, and that leaves an extra six feet of asphalt for pedestrians to walk on.
Could that be marked in some way?
It could be marked with a fog line.
Thank you. Brian, would you be okay with it being marked? The six feet?
Yeah. Yeah, that sounds good.
And then relative to the requirement for the modifications to the drainage, I don't think, I think staff's recommendation is fine. That doesn't require any modifications. And then relative to the parking off-street, I think that that is correct, that that would be a condition of the coastal development permit.
I think I might have caught the word impermeable instead of permeable at the end, and I just want to make sure that it's in the record that we were requesting that it be permeable.
The parking.
The parking, that's correct.
Go ahead, Mike.
The fire turnaround, paved, be paved?
Yeah, I thought we already addressed that.
I'm just making sure, we're just always saying the street.
That's what I intended, Mike.
Okay.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second to that?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All right. Trip, you're up. Roll call vote, please.
Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
No, because of the drainage issue. I just hesitate approving something without more adequate drainage on it.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
And Melanie McAver?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries 6-1. That was a long one. I'd hope in the future we don't have surprises like that one on the changes. It's one thing to suggest it, but to only show the one was, it was a little unnerving, I'll be honest. So, thank you, everybody. Hopefully, we made some changes that make everybody happy. I doubt that happened, though. All right. Let's move on to the next one is Organic Humboldt LLC special permit and zoning clearance in the Scotia area.
Are we moving on to the items removed from consent?
No, we still have two more on public hearings. We just moved Holgerson up. So the, the next one is Organic Humboldt LLC special permit and zoning clearance in the Scotia area. I'll take a staff report, please.
Can I?
Go ahead, Thomas.
On the way up, I, there's a lot of public comment, I think, maybe on this one on the way up. I just, I drove the loop. I didn't stop or trespass, but just, I drove by it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Just one sec.
All right, I will get started then. My name is Abby Strickland, and I'm the assigned planner for Organic Humboldt LLC, application number 16475. The subject parcel is located in the Stafford area. The parcel is owned agriculture-exclusive with a flood zone, flood combining zone, and the land use designation is AE. The applicant is seeking a special permit for, not conditional use permit, as it says there, for an acre of new outdoor cultivation and also a zoning clearance certificate for 13,500 square feet of existing outdoor commercial cultivation being relocated to this parcel underneath the RRR program. Additionally, there's a 5,706-square-foot propagation greenhouse proposed. Water usage and storage, the annual water usage projected is 20,000 gallons, and the existing, or the proposed water storage, I suppose, it will be 50,000 gallons. The applicant will be utilizing rainwater catchment for irrigation, and dry farming techniques will be used. The parcel is serviced by PG&E, and all processing activities will occur off-site. This is a photo of the applicant's site plan. As you can see, that the greenhouses that are kind of moving in like a circular motion, that is the acre of outdoor cultivation. If you look to the east, there are greenhouses that are kind of darker with hash marks, and that would be the proposed 13,500 square feet. Upon approval of this application, the applicant would be authorized to cultivate the acre. However, the zoning clearance certificate for the 13,500 square feet, the darker greenhouses, has not been approved yet, so they would not be able to cultivate that until we've approved that zoning clearance certificate. This application received 10 public comments, and I summarized many of the points that were made by the commenters. One comment, or I guess not one, but multiple comments reference that the property owner does not live on-site. This will be rectified through approval, although the property owner won't be residing on-site. The site will be utilized by the lesee, and there's no requirement for property owners to be living on-site for a commercial operation. The applicant will not adhere to permit requirements was another common comment made. Currently, because this is not a existing site, we do not have any evidence of previous non-compliance by this applicant. Other commenters stated that the project would lower the water table. We do not have any data on file to support that the water table would be affected by this operation. And we also heard comments that the operation would negatively affect property values. And we also don't have any concrete data to show that this would happen. Another commenter recommended that there be trained guard dogs on-site. This is not a requirement of the code, and I think that might also be more of a nuisance to the community. So instead, the applicant's security plan states that there are gates on the property, that they will utilize game cameras, and that there will be a guard on-site during the harvest or the cultivation season. The commenter, another comment stated that the access road does not have a centerline stripe. This is true. The centerline stripe does not go all the way down Stafford Road. It ends about 50 feet down Stafford Road. But a road evaluation was prepared by a engineer, and they stated that although there are two pinch points on Stafford Road on the way to the applicant's property, that the road does meet the functional equivalent of a category four road standard. The, some comments stated that the access road cannot handle the increased traffic. This was also evaluated in the road evaluation and was found to be able to accommodate the increased traffic from the project. Comments were made that the applicant underestimated their water use. This is a new operation, so water use is estimated. The applicant's required to meter their water, so if we do find that they are using more than projected, then they could modify their irrigation plan. They also have more water storage on-site than they are projecting for their annual water usage. There, they'll have 30,000 extra gallons of water storage availability should they exceed the projected annual water usage. The applicant's not the property owner was a common comment that was made. The applicant's not required to be the property owner. Access road's not suitable for semi-trucks was another comment frequently made. And there are no, there's no proposal to use semi-trucks to remove the infrastructure from the site each year. What will be used is a trailer. I spoke with the agent, and the trips to, for the entire year will equate to 12 trips, which will be made by a truck with a trailer to remove the storage containers on-site that'll be holding all of the infrastructure that's required to be removed each year. Many comments were concerned that the applicant would use the well that is existing on-site for the operation, although it's not included in the operation. And I neglected to include a condition specifically stating that the applicant will not use the well and will monitor the well. But I am recommending that we revise the conditions of approval and include the requirement that an applicant, the applicant obtain a water meter, if there isn't already one, for the well, and that they maintain records on-site for viewing by an inspector during their annual inspection, should there be a cause for concern that the well's been used. Fertilizer and pesticide use, there is concern that the fertilizer and pesticide use could result in algae blooms along the Eel River. This is an organic operation, and the only intend to use natural amendments. There was a concern that pedestrians along Stafford Road would be impacted or put in danger because of the operation. This is a, this is a county-maintained road. There are no sidewalks. Anybody walking along that road, in my opinion, is, you know, potentially at risk for, you know, vehicular traffic. But what the applicant did recommend that they would be willing to do is to work with the community to decide what days or times would work best for them to remove all the cultivation infrastructure from the site so that they're not impacting travel times for the community or any time where there could be people walking along the road. So that's something we could consider as well. There was reports that the infrastructure appeared to be too close to the streamside management area. We, the applicant did submit a biological assessment and had a biologist delineate the streamside management area. The setback from the Eel River used that delineation. I met with CDFW on April 14th, and they talked with me in, about the delineation of streamside management area. They didn't have any concern regarding that, but they did ask that we include two conditions for the project, requiring remediation and replanting in the streamside management area, and also an invasive species management plan. The applicant agreed to both those things, and they are included in my conditions of approval. Many folks were concerned that the removal of the water tanks each year would prevent the applicant from collecting rainwater, which is their primary source or their secondary source of irrigation water. The applicant's proposal, and I spoke with the chief building inspector today, is to create an engineered create an engineered foundation to which they can anchor the water tanks, all 50,000 gallons. The chief building inspector stated that this, you know, this would have to just be submitted, plans would have to be submitted by the engineer, and then we could permit the applicant to do that. They are, and they are currently talking to an engineer to develop those plans. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Director Ford, but they wouldn't be able to begin cultivation until that plan was in place, because come October 16th, they have to remove all of those water tanks or have them anchored, which I think at that time, if this plan wasn't in place before October 16th, and they do have to remove the tanks, their next cultivation season would be impacted, definitely. Unpermitted structures, there are structures on-site which some commenters claimed were not permitted. We did locate historic building permits for these structures dating back to '74, so these structures are permitted. They do not meet some of the setback requirements, but they are legal nonconforming structures, and the project is not going to increase the nonconformity, because they will, they won't be using the structures, they will be collecting rainwater off of them, but no interior or structural changes are proposed, so. Applicants, or some commenters stated that the proposal does not align with the AVS and Stafford Community Planning Area. I've read through the community planning, like, the general plan and what's said about this community planning area. It actually states because of its location in the flood zone, its intent is not to increase residential density, but actually maintain its agricultural community. And although there is a point to be made that this isn't a small operation, the community, the general plan didn't specifically state that small operations, small agricultural operations were preferred. So. There have been claims that there's no septic system on-site. There is a septic system on-site. It's extremely old, again, part of the historic building permits. The applicant has no intention of using the septic system. Whoops, didn't mean to do that. But they are providing portable toilets during the cultivation season. And lastly, there was a comment that stated that the, this project would not be in compliant with, would not be compliant with CAL FIRE, something along the lines of the other neighboring properties had to have inspections by CAL FIRE for consistency with fire-safe standards. The project was referred to CAL FIRE. They didn't make any comments at all. They actually said they have no comments to make. So should this issue come up in the future, it's my belief that the applicant would work with CAL FIRE independently to address any concerns they might have. So, lastly, you know, staff is recommending approval of the special permit and the associated zoning clearance certificate. We are, but I am requesting that we add a condition requiring them to meter the well water, in case there's ever any discrepancies on where the irrigation water came from. And then, lastly. Oh, that the applicant communicate with the community, especially those that commented. I know prior to the meeting, the agent did reach out to all of the people he was able to gather contact information for and kind of communicated with them independently, but we would create a condition that they have to work with them to figure out what time would work best for them to remove the infrastructure and have those trailers with the shipping containers moving off-site. So with that, that concludes my presentation, but I'm available for questions, and as is the applicant's agent.
All right. Any questions for staff? Go ahead, Thomas.
So through the chair, this project, the water use concerned me, so let's say they're going along, I know it's a new cultivation, so it's proposed, and they're proposing dry farming. At what point in time? What happens if they, say, for example, are more like seven gallons a square foot? They would have to have engineered plans for all that water storage, correct or incorrect?
That would be a true statement, because they would need the rainwater catchment to be stored on-site. If the applicant didn't want to follow through on creating or paying for a larger engineered foundation or more water tanks, because they are expensive, they would have the option to reduce their cultivation area to what could be supported by the stored water.
Okay. Can I do two more questions?
Go ahead.
The second question, also around water, I'm hearing of a recommendation for a condition that they put a meter on the well. What happens if, let's say hypothetically, that well was utilized for cultivation? What would take place?
They would be, if a inspector were to go out there and find that the well was used, they would be found in violation of their permit, and I believe it would, well, I don't know, Director Ford, do you want to?
Something we look at on a case-by-case basis. You know, it could result in revocation of the permit if it wasn't a grievous enough violation.
Okay. Just because there is public comment from way, way back believing it was a diversionary well is why I asked the question. And the third question is, in the operations plan I'm reading, it's looking like one to two full-time employees and two to three seasonal employees. So if there's more employees than that, would they just need to revise their operations plan, or just those, that's another hang-up thing I have?
I would, I would hope that they, yeah, we would want their operation to be, their operations plan to accurately reflect their project description when it comes to increasing employees. I'm not confident that a modification to the project would be required, so long as the trips traveled to the site aren't increasing, so.
Thank you for that.
So they should be able to use their well for incidental purposes, as long as it's not agricultural, because of handwashing, drinking water, whatever, for their staff, so they shouldn't be totally prohibited from using it. But the other question I have, you know, we just talked for an hour about drainage. When you're that close to the Eel River, even though you're using organic fertilizer, whatever you're using, isn't there some mitigation that you have to put in place to not drain into the Eel River?
Well, there is a setback requirement. As the project stands currently, there are no physical drainage barriers, I suppose, to the Eel River. If CDFW had thought that that was a concern, I would hope that they would have asked for that when we met. But currently, right now, they have established a riparian replanting plan, so with that and an area on the bank of the river being restocked, I think that that might be a natural barrier.
Just also add that they are going to need to get clearance from the water board, and so they're going to need to prepare a plan demonstrating how they're going to prevent fertilizers and other things from being washed into the surface water.
All right. Any other questions? Go ahead, Mike.
I just wanted to clarify, in the conditions, looks like it's under B, General Conditions, number eight, that the clearance is from October 15th to April 16th, because it's vice versa in the writing here. It says from April 16th to October 15th.
Yes, so I will.
Because that's growing season.
I concur.
Right? So I would say.
I will request also that we modify condition number eight under General Conditions.
Because all my other questions were already asked.
Okay. Noah, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I actually just want to comment to Ms. Strickland, that was an exceptionally well-done staff report. I really appreciated the way you itemized all the individual issues that you pulled out of public comments and responded to each of them like a secret document. That was really clarifying. That said, there was one, and I also really appreciate that you mentioned and added condition that they consult with neighbors concerning the timing of infrastructure remover and things like that. Basically, that they are required by a condition to consult with the neighborhood. That's, that's a good thing. But one, one comment that I recall from at least one letter, maybe more, but certainly from the Indy Riggs letter, is speaking to the defunct rain catchment system. He is a neighbor who actually grows cannabis. He obviously can see onto the property, because he's looking at the, the piping and the downspouts that he sees on, and he says, "On the four visible downspouts located on two separate buildings, only one can possibly feed water to its tank." I've even made a previous comment about this and was told by the project planners that the applicant would fix this. So I guess I just wanted to highlight that point. What he sees out there right now is not necessarily what there will be. Is it your understanding, though, that improvements will be made to the rainwater collection, collection system in order to accommodate the project plan?
So I actually shared that information with the agent, and they did have the applicant send me photos of the rainwater collection system, although photos are a difficult thing to review and actually gain an understanding of the condition of the system. So the applicant will have a building inspection prior to cultivation. They were scheduled to have a building inspection on April 22nd prior to the hearing, but it had to be canceled and moved. So before the project can even be initiated, they will have someone on-site to review the rainwater collection system.
Okay, that completely settles that concern. And then my other question, which is maybe here, neither here nor there, is, do you know if we approve this tonight, if the applicant is still planning and able to go ahead with cultivation this year?
If the applicant can show that the rainwater collection system on-site is filled with water, then he, they are, will be assuming that all the other conditions in here are also completed, such as paving the driveway apron, then I could see a path forward to cultivation this season. So yes, potentially, I suppose.
Okay. It sounds like we've got it covered, though, with the required inspection prior to cultivation. So that makes me feel a lot better. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions? I'd like to open this up to public, so we can keep it moving. So I will open the public comment now. Anybody who wishes to speak, please come up.
I'm Nate Madsen with Rain and Zip PLC. I'm the agent for the applicant and attorney. I don't want to take up too much time. I know it's getting late. I think Abby did an excellent job of covering so many things, but I just want to add to her bullet point presentation that it is very much our intention to keep in touch with the neighbors, take their concerns very seriously. You know, there are answers to the questions raised that I think support approval. We have a code-compliant project in an agricultural field. This project was developed over the course of years. You know, my initial meeting at the planning department was in November of 2019. That was after I had already assessed the parcel for zoning clearance, agricultural uses. There is very good evidence in the record that this will be a great site for dry farming, and the concerns around the water are absolutely shared by the applicant. They, they also have been thinking of alternative options. I've shared this with Abby. It's not the proposal. The proposal's exclusively rainwater catchment. The well is off-limits, but the applicant has explored a skywell, and it's some kind of unit that extracts water from the air. It's not the proposal. It's not the plan, but if we run into trouble, it's an option that will be considered at that later date and would need a modification. And I just want to, again, make sure that the neighbors here, loud and clear, please call us. My number, 707-442-3034. I did email the commenting parties last week, to those who left their email on their comments, and I did call them this week. Haven't been able to really develop the dialogue. We received the comments late, but we're here. We want to talk, and we want to be receptive to the neighborhood. Organic Humboldt is a neighborhood-minded person. One of the comments actually said, "We're not anti-cannabis here in Stafford. We're pro-community," and so is Organic Humboldt, and we want to make that point real clear. So thank you so much for the time.
All right. Thank you. Is there anybody else, sir, you want to speak?
I'm Jay Fenton. My wife and I have owned the adjacent 10 acres west of the subject property for the last 24 years. Throughout this time, we have maintained a summer vegetable garden, as well as a very extensive orchard. And I dry-farm my tomatoes, and as such, I understand what dry-farming will do or will not do. I understand the soil. I understand the climate out there. The applicant shows to dry-farm grows a year. Dry-farming, the first grow is feasible, but by midsummer planting, will need continuous irrigation. Dry-farming is not waterless farming. The first grow will require 114,000 gallons of water. The second will require 570,000 gallons of water. The applicant states 20,000 gallons of water, up from initial 10,000 gallons of water. And that results into something like .35 gallons a square foot, or just .58 gallons per plant. Over two grows, 17,000 plants per grow, 34,000 plants, that's a half a gallon. You can't grow anything with a half a gallon of water, not even cactus. A third of a gallon per square foot is inconsistent with the 10 to 13 or 14 gallons a square foot, typical for the other applications before you. The condition, self-monitoring of the well water lacks any measure of control. No requirement is shown regarding the type of meter, the placement, a cap on usage, or securing with a seal to prevent bypassing or removal, and that's a very important part. My downgrade, my downgraded neighbors and I depend upon the aquifer, and what we see here is 700,000 gallons approximately being drawn from that aquifer. There's no study by the applicant as to what that effect will be. My two written submissions prior to this in here, number, number of gross errors and failures to challenge the obvious deficiencies by the planning department. If a site topo had been required, it would show that the property drains by natural curvature there in the floodplain onto my property during heavy rains. As a commercial operation, this should not be permitted due to the potential for contaminated runoff. Anyway, staff repeatedly shows an existing 3,200 square foot, 3,200 square foot catchment system. There is no.
You're going to have to wrap it up.
There's not 3,200 square feet at all. There is no catchment system. They're going to use an excessive amount of water on this site. I ask you to deny this permit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I wasn't going to speak, but I have to respond to this last-minute chart, and I would ask that you put that back on the screen. The, the comparison that Mr. Levy just complimented her on.
The public comment?
No, no. It was the staff report. So that I can refer to it? Yes, here it is. Okay. Just picking at it, because it's the first time we've seen it, and we, we realize how very busy you are with all of your, your cases, that we've submitted some very comprehensive material that you didn't have a chance to look at. There are pictures in our submittals that show the so-called catchment system. Those are those historic buildings that have been gutted out by vandalism and are claimed by the applicant to be used for catching water. If you look at the C2 site plan, that two-story building has been removed, and there's only 780 square feet of roof. If you look at their, again, our numbers, they're claiming they're going to use only 20,000 gallons a year, plus the dry farming, to provide for one or two, two grows, when actually they would need about, and we've given you charts that compare them with all these other applications that you've approved, that you normally need an average of about 10, or seven to 14 gallons per square foot. And if you look at the, the staff report, it says that they're using 7.9 gallons. It's a mathematical error, just like the, the tanks, and it shows that they're actually going to use .35 gallons per square foot of planting. Their whole calculation has not been examined. The catchment system has been approved without any examination. This is all bogus. The, the idea that they're going to be moving tanks or engineering tanks, they've never discussed engineering tanks before. They've got these tanks. In our pictures that show, there are actually 250, 2,500 gallon tanks that are sitting under the roof gutters of these derelict buildings that they claim are historic, whereas they're not inhabitable. They're using them just to catch water. If they actually catch water with 700 square feet, they'll have less than 1,000, it's about 3,000 square feet of gallons of water a year. They're not even getting the 20,000. So there's a lot of information that we have. So there's a lot of information that we have inserted into our public comments in writing so that you would have more time and the staff would examine it. The catchment is bogus. The, the tank removal is not real. The amount of water they're using is not true. All of these things are-
You're going to have to wrap it up, ma'am.
So, so this is a last minute thrown at us, whereas we've worked very hard and we've followed the continuances so that we could respond to them. It's not fair that we're being asked to let all this pass with, without any time for you to really deliberate these, these reports that we've submitted. So in, in overall, this is not a good site. This will damage the, even the nitrogen, even if it's organic, will, will infuse into the, to the water that is going downstream, down gradient to our property next door and about seven other properties that are all dependent on well water. If they're going to use 700 gallons of water and they're going to have to use that, that well, that well has never been certified, it has, it should be certified.
You're going to have to wrap it up.
Yes. So you're, you're moving too fast and you should give us more time, again, for you to study what we've submitted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public here that wishes to speak on this one? All right. I'm going to go to the Zoom and the first caller is Indy Riggs.
Hi, how's it going? I'm Indy Riggs. I live with my family adjacent to this proposed project at 503 Stafford Road. My house is actually a mere 300 feet from the RRR greenhouses and the site map. I'd first like to begin with thanking you all for your service to our community, the commissioner's planning department, and I'd like to specifically thank Director Ford for his service to our community. It's been invaluable and I wish you the best of luck in the future. I have the utmost respect for you all. Secondly, as I have already submitted two letters of opposition containing technical information, I would rather use my time right now to explain what Stafford means to us as a community and what I believe a well-intentioned individual or entity should have done in order to win over or integrate with a community. It is of my opinion that an impactful project such as this, one which would completely alter the fabric of our community, should have carried out a campaign, campaign of community outreach from day one before submission of the project. In the very least, the applicant or the representatives should have engaged us as soon as it became evident that we as a community oppose this project. However, that did not happen, except for a last minute phone call, which I received from the applicant's representatives just yesterday. As it was very last minute and I do not represent all my neighbors, I did not feel it was proper or appropriate to engage in any sort of negotiation without the opinions or the knowledge of my neighbors in my community. That being said, I feel this entire process has shown me the lack of concern, commitment, responsibility, or responsiveness of this project towards our community and lends to the suspicion that this is but a money-making scheme at the expense of Stafford residents. Whereas I may welcome a responsible and responsive applicant, I must draw a line when I feel our community is being set up for exploitation of our resources, infrastructure, and environment. I cannot put faith in anyone or anything that does not put our community at the forefront of their concerns. Additionally, as a farmer myself, how am I to trust the applicant's growing practices? How can I trust that the wind which blows every afternoon upriver won't carry with its spores of botrytis, powdery mildew, or even the decimating hops weight in bioroid? As a small farmer, these are things that could end my season and take food off my table, the table where I feed my children. As is evident from the lack of action and responses, from the fallen gutters to no lock on the gate to, until today, the complete ignoring of a key component to the project concerning rain collection, when also stating all water tanks will be removed during winter months, I have a complete lack of confidence in this entire project. As I greatly respect and admire you all for your service, I will accept your decision, but I ask you all one last thing, to put yourself in my position, our community's position, and how would you feel with your house and family a mere 300 feet away from the project, my livelihood, our extensive B apiaries, which would be decimated from floating pesticides on the wind? How would you react if my home was your home?
Your time is up, sir. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller is Rachel.
Hi, thank you. I want to first thank the planner who gave this detailed report. It was really helpful in me understanding what's going into the project. And what I heard a lot in, in listening to your presentation is a lot of the applicants intend to, the applicants will work with, the applicants will communicate with community members. And what I'm hearing in that is a lot of hopes on how the operation will be done and hopes and intentions, we would like them to, that is far too little to put a project forward on, especially a project of this magnitude in a small community of residents. I also heard a few, there's no data to prove this and that's not good enough for the community of Stafford, especially regarding property values and our water table as we prepare for record drought years. In my opinion, putting a project forward on good intentions of the people proposing this project is not enough to allow a project of this magnitude to move forward. Of course, I'm not a planner or in your positions, which I respect you all very much for this work. Organic Humble is a community-driven operation. That is what I heard from Mr. Madsen. How is that when they have not reached out for the last several years until yesterday? You have shown nothing to the effect of we are a community business. The owners left the property abandoned, but the gates open, not even locked, not even closed for the past several years. We've had one attempt at communication and that was yesterday. I ask that this project be denied or put off at this time until there's more solid data, less hopes and intentions, and actual communication with the community. There are portions of this proposal, which at this time are not based on solid data and evidence, but on the hope and good intentions of the applicant, and that's just not good enough for the community of Stafford.
All right. Are you done, ma'am?
I'm done.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this item? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment. Somebody put their hand up. I'll let her go because it was right at the end. Shoshana Patterson.
Hi, a good evening or good night. I would like to introduce myself. My name is Shoshana. I am the wife of Organic Humble owner Vincent James Patterson. We have been married for 10 years and he is our loving father of four, our, four of our children ages 11 to one. He is also a committed farmer to low-impact farming practices. He uses organic pesticide-free practices. He, you know, covers with cover crops in the winter. In the past, this coming recently, he has come to help even our ropes course at the school. He's working actively with the community and the children. And I've watched my husband be brave and persevere and keep faith in our community and our home. We have been through a long haul to get here today and we are grateful to still be here with so many other families moving on. I was born here in Humble and I have spent my whole life in admiration for Mother Nature and I, we are both advocates for the trees. James and I spend time in the rainy season planting oak and redwoods and we both have passion for native forest land restoration. We love this land. Here in Stafford, there's the old Julia Butterfly sign here and it just reminds me back to 97 when my mom took me along with the community hiking up to meet Julia. Organic Humble is here with love for the planet and appreciation for the diversity of this community and all the life and the land. I sincerely hope that the Stafford and the community members will find space in their hearts to welcome our farm. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and I'm not opening it back up at this hour. Okay. So where are we at, guys?
I can speak to some of the comments we've heard. So first, I'd like to talk about the water use and how that's actually calculated. So the applicant says they may obtain two harvests. They might use light deprivation. If the season isn't going well, they will only do one run. So if we did use the 20,000 gallon calculation for the single run, then it's 2.85 gallons per square foot. If, if you take the proposed cultivation area and divide that by the proposed water usage. When it comes to the well, this gentleman was speaking about a seal or bypassing to prevent bypassing or removal. I'd be happy to include the specifics if we have them to make sure that the well is not tamperable, I suppose. So if that's what you'd like to do, we can add that as a condition. The water tanks for removal, I did state that any water tanks that aren't flood elevation certified or have not been anchored must be removed. So that's something important to keep in mind. Lastly, one thing which I like, really want to comment on is, you know, hearing, we're putting a lot of faith in these people and I, and I don't know how to say it in, in layman's terms, I'll try, is I don't go into a project thinking that this person is going to do what I asked them not to do. And so I, you know, we give people, we have faith in people and we hope they have good intentions until they have, give us a reason not to. And I don't know that I can say that the applicant has done that. Also with the water tanks and the rainwater catchment infrastructure, technically, because this operation hasn't been permitted yet, there shouldn't be water tanks and there shouldn't be a rainwater catchment infrastructure. So, I mean, I talked to Director Ford about this and you could, and we do, charge triple building permit fees for starting an operation before you've been permitted to do that. And so maybe they don't have all the water tanks right now. Maybe the rainwater catchment system isn't set up perfectly right now, but they will be required to have all of those things they've said that they would have prior to conducting any operations. But I would like to ask Nate, if you could, has a structure been removed since our operations plan stated that the catchment area would be 3200 square feet?
No.
Okay. So, did I miss anything?
No, it's okay. We're not going to keep doing that though, but it's okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So there are no dates in here for the projected adding to the existing water availability. So, I mean, I, I think at this point, you know, there are a lot of questions surrounding the water storage and would definitely have to be limited to one, one cycle. And then, you know, if there was a path towards two, we would need to see a date, you know, associated with that doubling of the water storage. So I don't know if you have any information regarding those dates or not at this point.
So prior to the operation beginning, I mean, they need to have all the water storage they said they were going to have. So they'll have the 50,000 gallons and I would maybe even include a condition that an inspector verify that the water tanks are full prior to cultivation. We can definitely do that. And then if we do find, and I could include another condition stating, should the water usage, annual water usage exceed that, that was projected initially, the applicant will be required to obtain additional water storage and that would be through likely a minor deviation to the project. So it would go through that formal process.
So with hearing staff, I hear all the community concerns and stuff like that, but the rain catchment, I really appreciate that. So we need to take all that out and like, this is a new project if, if approved and they, if approved, they have to go through a lot of steps to show that they have X amount of water storage and they have to show that that water store, if we add those other conditions of approval, they have that water to cultivate the area. And I'm just, the amount of water use, I know dry farming, some people that do it. I don't know anyone in the Stafford area that does it or right here. So it's hard to do calculations of gallons per square foot. I just, I'm a little uncomfortable with the 20,000 gallons. I'd be more comfortable in like, probably the two to four thou, or two to four gallons per square foot range, possibly because that's what I've seen in other dry farm applications. But also the reality is, if approved, it's going to go through potential appeals and then they have to get a state license. So they're only going to be able to cultivate one run. So it'd be very easy to understand what the data is for water consumption per square foot. If we could add some more conditions in there, I could, I could, with knowing all those facts, I think if they cultivated and showed their water use per square foot and then it's a mathematical equation going into the future seasons, this is how much water we have stored, this is what you're allowed to grow, I don't see what would be the problem there because if they're, as long as it's rain caught and not utilized the well, you're going to mitigate the concerns with the neighborhood and I'll think on any more.
Go ahead, Melanie.
If we require these extra inspections and verifications, you know, we, we never see those back here. So I don't know, you know, if those are being done or who does them, but do we have staff?
The applicant pays a building inspection fee when they apply and so they have paid for the inspection that they have not yet received. And I think that may have worked to our benefit because this would be a good time for the building inspector to evaluate the water tanks that are not existing, review the catchment area and the, a condition of the rainwater catchment infrastructure.
We do annual inspections on sites and in fact, I'll, I'll just throw this plug in, already this year, we've done more inspections this year than we did all of last year. So we have greatly increased our efficiency and the number of sites that we're touching.
I have something. If you under calculate or if they under calculate the amount of water that they need, they're only going to be able to grow what they can grow with the water that they have because everything's going to die. They can't use the well, they can't use the river, they can't haul water. So can we include in there that they can expand their water usage or do they have to come back and get another permit to do that?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Director Ford, but I believe if we, if they expanded their water usage beyond what they had tank and tanks available, then additional infrastructure is required and that's when we start considering whether the permit needs to be modified formally. Say that they are, you know, able, they're saying they're going to use 20,000 gallons a year currently. If they change that to 40,000 gallons a year, they still have a surplus of 10,000 gallons of water onsite. So I'm not sure a permit modification would be necessary in that point. Should they exceed the 50,000 gallons of water storage they have currently, then they would be required to notify us and modify the application formally and it may come back before you.
So if I could, it just sounds to me a little bit like there's a little bit of uncertainty and kind of concerned by the commission about the water usage and verifying the, the actual ability to know what the appropriate number is. And, and so it, it may be that one of the things that the commission wants to do is, is kind of roll this in more of a phased approach, have them do something a first year, demonstrate their water use. And then if it meets those things, they can go with all of the square footage and if not, they need to expand their, their water storage and their rain catchment.
Could we also have like a two or three or even four inspections over that, you know, pilot period? And I appreciate that you relayed that you are doing more annual inspections now. Thank you.
There is a, a limit to how many times we can realistically get to a site. I mean, because there are over 1,000 sites that we need to keep our eyes on. So if we start, you know, going to one site four times and continue to add to that, that exponentially increases the number of sites that we're, we're having to get to. I don't want to say we can't if that's what you want and if something really would need to take up the board of supervisors in terms of adding staff to be able to do that.
Yeah, thank you. I was just thinking in this particular case where we're wanting to know, you know, results over the course of the first year, it would be useful to have one like in six months, for example.
Well, if it's just something for the first year, yes. I, I, I mean, we could coordinate closely with the applicant to make sure that they were on track and not pulling water from another source. I mean, that's really the, the concern here is that they're not pulling water out of the river or out of the river under flow.
Thank you.
Thomas?
So I'm going to ask a couple of dumb questions and then I might walk out the door. So the way I understand this is we have concerns about water. So if we condition in a way that they need X amount of gallons of water, then-
that they need X amount of gallons of water, then staff verifies that they have that water, there's obviously concerned neighbors. So we're gonna have reports if there's trucked water, we're gonna have reports if they're using the well. I think we need to trust staff to do their job. Secondly, this is directly at staff. Is it our job to look at a project, make sure it meets a general plan in land use and approve it or deny it? Or is it our job to look at all of that and then monitor and enforce in all those kind of projects? Or is it our job to trust staff to do that other part?
Yes, typically not the planning commission's job to monitor and to do the inspections. That's really staff's job.
And that's why I'm sitting here today. So, thank you.
So I, I'm in agreement with going ahead with this and, and, but putting an additional condition on the monitoring of the well to where it's, it's sealed and verified then so that that monitoring is, is valid and will not be abused then. If, and was that condition added in there on the monitoring? It's not in the written part, right?
The applicant would like to reserve the use of the well for their domestic purposes, anything not cannabis-related. So assuming that this fixture would...
Right. I'm not saying against any use whatsoever, but it's monitored for domestic use only.
Right. And, and I think there would be a substantial difference
Right.
in those totals. So, would you like me to maybe follow up with all of the conditions we've added so that you can formulate a motion? Yes?
I don't think there was anything else added on there besides the monitoring of the well.
I have here, so the monitoring of the well. Commissioner Mulder had potentially thought about making, you know, requesting that, that first phase of the project be one run to really get an idea of what the water totals are. Is that correct? And then we have the inspections which were brought up. They're already gonna get a building inspection. So if we want more than that one inspection, I could explicitly state that as a condition. And I believe that's all.
Okay. Is there anything else that she missed?
By a second inspection, Melanie, what, what are you talking about exactly besides that initial part?
That was to, to monitor the, the water use. You know, if it's a, a phased-in thing, kind of like a pilot over the first year, I think it would be useful to go, for example, in six months.
Six months from?
From the beginning of cultivation.
June, July? That, that's into January, February. So that's the middle of rainy season then?
Could, could I offer that there be an inspection prior to initiation of cultivation and an inspection at the midpoint of the cultivation season to monitor water use?
Fantastic. Thank you.
Wouldn't it make more sense to have it at the end of the first cultivation season? So then you'd have from the beginning to the end of that first cultivation, then you'd know exactly what was used for that first cultivation.
Sure.
Maybe I'm missing something there. It just seems like...
No, I just, the only reason I said mid was to, to kind of get a snapshot of what the water use is during the middle point of the growing season to see if they're going to be able to finish.
I can see that point. Yeah, I hadn't thought about it that way.
Can't you also just ask them to submit information too if you, you know?
Yeah.
If you're interested in figuring out how this dry, I don't know how dry farming works, but they could submit it and you can do an inspection or their well log or whatever you're asking them to do.
Go ahead, Thomas.
Wouldn't it save staff time and get the same result if they submitted monthly reports of their water consumption? Or bi-monthly reports of their water consumption?
Well, the way it's conditioned right now, we're not monitoring the water use out of the tank. I guess we could add a separate condition to meter water use. That is a bit unusual for dry land farming because typically dry land farming isn't irrigating except to get the, the plants established.
Okay. I'm just, I'm trying to figure out a way to avoid sending someone to a project over and over and over again where they could just have reports sent in, because we're trying to just get data for a mathematical equation.
Well, I think fundamentally what we're trying to figure out is whether or not they're able to cultivate without continued irrigation all the way through the cultivation season.
What do you guys think about the director's idea of doing it midway through and that condition added?
Yeah, I, like I said, I've already thought, yeah, I've already agreed. I think it's a great idea.
So do you want to make the motion or do you want me to? Okay. So, subject to the conditions we've just outlined here, I'd like to move to adopt the resolution finding the commission is considered the addendum to the adopted final environmental impact report to the CCLUO pursuant to section 15164 of the State Sequels Guidelines, making all the required findings for approval of the special permit and adopt the resolution approving Organic Humboldt LLC, subject to the recommended conditions outlined and amended here tonight.
I will second that and also add that I've heard the neighbors' concerns. I drove through there today. I think it's a beautiful neighborhood and I believe the way these added conditions have been put on, that it's going to help with those concerns and if it's either gonna work or it's not.
All right. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second.
Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Alan Bondio?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McAlver?
Yes.
And Mike Newman?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries unanimous. It is 10:04. We are not gonna, do we need to continue anything?
Need to continue Emerald Sky growers and the motion would be this, to continue Emerald Sky growers to continue the Homegrown LLC and continue Mezro Farms LLC to the meeting of June 16, 2022. We will put those on the front part of the agenda.
I so moved.
So moved.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Alan, you said second?
No.
Oh, Thomas, you said second?
It's a coin, it's a coin flip.
It was Mitchell and me. Mulder.
Mitchell Mulder.
No discussion. Roll call.
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McAlver?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
And Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Did you want to talk about the special meeting or will we wait?
I think we're gonna wait.